The meeting is called to order, but the clerk please call the roll.
Mayor Kaufman.
Here.
Mayor Protim Bergen.
Here.
Councilmember Coombs.
Present.
Councilmember Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Drinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Here.
Councilmember Marcano.
Present.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Mario.
Present.
Councilmember Sundberg.
Here.
And Councilmembers Zavonic.
Here.
There's a quorum.
Announcement for the call in line.
Good evening, City Council welcomes feedback from the public on open matters appearing on the agenda and during public invited to be heard. If you would like to speak and have not already spoken to an operator, please press star three. For those watching on Channel Eight, call 855-695-3475 and press star three when connected. You will hear a prompt confirming you are in line to speak to an operator and then be able to continue listening to the meeting. When the operator comes online, please be ready to give them your name and agenda item you wish to speak on. Keep in mind, you must press star three before the city clerk reads the title of the item you wish to speak on. If you are not in the queue for the first public invited to be heard, when it's called, you will be placed in the queue for the public invited to be heard at the end of the meeting. And as a reminder, council does not allow comments about any item on the agenda during public invited to be heard. Any speaker has three minutes. Thank you.
Please join me for an invocation. O Lord, O God, and O Father, we come to you and we ask that you would look upon this particular gathering tonight and guide us in our decisions. Bless our city with honorable industries, sound education, and good government. Unite the community together, even though we come from different backgrounds. We pray that there be justice and peace in our city. Give City Council wisdom, direction, and sensitivity to the business and procedures before us tonight. Hear us therefore, as we commit this meeting to the health of this community. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Executive session update. During executive session, we had legal advice, discussed negotiations. Public invited to be heard.
Mayor, we do have three individuals. The first is Jerry Drinsky. Mayor, point of order.
Mayor Protim.
Oh, do we not have minutes?
No, we do not.
You did not? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Drinsky, a name which should be familiar to you. I would like to direct my comments this evening to Councilmember Marcano. On your webpage, there is a sentence that reads, and I quote, "He is currently dedicating his time to serving the residents of Ward Four." That sentence is absolutely not true. I am a resident of Ward Four. As you publicly stated several months ago, the Republican Party is a sadistic death cult and the most dangerous organization that has ever existed. An outrageous and quite frankly ignorant comment. The remarks made by Councilmember Drinsky, for which you would like to see her censured, pale in comparison to yours. If anyone should be censured or apologize, it should be you and not her. But your words were, and Councilmember Drinsky's words were, are free speech that is protected. I'm quite sure there are many Republicans in Ward Four, and you have insulted and demeaned them. Mr. Marcano, you are not serving your residents, you are serving your own personal agenda. An agenda of disrespect for the police, for public safety, and I believe for the future of Aurora. In my judgment, your political career begins and ends with the Aurora City Council, because while it is easy to represent those with whom you agree, true leaders will do all they can to work with those with whom they disagree. And you are not capable of doing that because you are not a leader, but a follower of a hateful agenda. If you truly cared about the residents of Ward Four, you would resign and let someone else actually serve Ward Four. Thank you, Council, for the time to present these comments.
Okay, next we have David Kobari.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Thank you for allowing the public to come up and voice comment. I want to address specifically the camping ban. You're gonna have a lot of...
I'm sorry, sir. The camping ban you'll have to make after your public comments.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry. I'm addressing specifically the appointment of, I believe it was Garrett Wills, to the zoning and planning commission. I believe that last council meeting, the disappointment was postponed to be voted on during this council meeting. That applicant did not state that they had a conflict of interest, namely their position as a consultant within the real estate market. They have a very, very strong conflict of interest there, and they also made it clear that they were going to essentially rubber stamp things that would, as long as they were up to code, they would go through the zoning and planning commission. Councilman Sundberg, I know that you have a restaurant in a growing area of town. You know, this applicant seems to be like the person, the type of person that would allow for, you know, six-lane highways and all kinds of costly mess that would make it to where your restaurant, you know, nobody would walk up to it. They would do a U-turn to come into the parking lot, and you'd have, you know, more parking space than restaurant space. And a lot of Aurora is already kind of falling into this. Parker Road, you know, the areas in Havana, on the Havana Street corridor where I live, I don't want the same four restaurants. I do not like Buffalo Wild Wings, you know? I would like to see a zoning applicant like the gentleman who, the name escapes me, who's coming in from, works for the city of Denver, who is an actual urban planner. That's his job day in and day out. And so please consider that on item 18. Thank you.
Next is Bruno.
Good evening, Council. My name is Bruno, and I am a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. And I'm here with a number of other community members who have come to speak out against the urban camping ban, a policy that is cruel, wasteful...
Sir, I'm so sorry. I don't mean to...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm gonna get to that. I know that it's later in the agenda, but I did want to make it clear that we are gonna be here, and we will make sure that every single one of us is heard on that issue. But moving on, I wanted to speak actually, specifically to this five-point plan, coming from the new right-wing majority of the City Council. We know that you're rapidly moving to execute a swath of pro-police measures that will win your favor with your right-wing donor base, that was so offended to see APD held accountable last year. But the people of Aurora are facing real issues: homelessness, rising rents, joblessness, youth alienation, and violence. You propose to bludgeon the citizens of Aurora with more policing, more patrols, more surveillance, more criminalization. Your donors may be happy with what you're doing here, but the people of the city are the ones that have to pay that price. We're here to say that if you think that you will not meet resistance in this effort to further increase the police stranglehold on this town, you are wrong. Thank you.
That was the last individual to be heard.
The next item is the adoption of the agenda. I would like to amend the adoption of the agenda to put item number nine, which is, I'm sorry...
Eleven A.
I'm sorry, eleven A. Item number nine is the adoption of the agenda. Item number eleven A to go after item number fourteen A. Item number eleven A directs the city to ensure that we have adequate shelter options for the camping ban, but if the camping ban doesn't pass, it's a moot question. And then individuals speaking on this issue, if they could combine their comments to both the ordinance and the resolution. And so, are there, need a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
Motion, Mayor?
Mayor Protim.
Motion to approve the agenda with the change to move item eleven A to follow after fourteen A.
It's been moved by Mayor Protim Bergen, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Zavonic to adopt the agenda as amended. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Coombs.
I would like to amend that motion to also move our council and mayor reports to our next study session, only because I expect it will be incredibly late by the time we would be giving those reports, and we're unlikely to have people listening in the meeting for that long.
Very well.
Mayor?
Mayor Protim.
I would also entertain that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Coombs, seconded by Councilmember Bergen to move the council reports to the next regular meeting of the Aurora City Council.
Mayor, I'm sorry. It was actually for a study session, because I don't want us to...
Oh, to the study session? I stand corrected. Is that, okay, to the next study session. Discussion? Seeing none, then the question before us is the adoption of the agenda as amended. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the agenda? Call the question.
The item has been opened and esccribed. Mayor Kaufman?
The mayor votes yes.
Councilmembers Zavonic, I don't have your vote. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Oh, it should be on.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt the agenda with item eleven A moved after item fourteen A, and for the mayor and council reports to be moved to the next study session.
Very well. The next item before us is the approval, the adoption of the consent calendar, item ten A through ten B. A motion?
Mayor?
Mayor Protim.
Motion to approve ten A, please.
And not ten D, I'm sorry.
Oh, and ten B, sorry.
And ten B. It's been moved by the Mayor Protim, seconded by...
Drinsky.
Seconded by Councilmember Drinsky to approve the adoption of the consent calendar, item ten A to ten B. Discussion? Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please call, would the clerk please call the question on the adoption of the consent calendar?
Mayor Kaufman?
Yes.
And Councilmember Drinsky, I'm sorry, I don't have your vote on this.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously to approve the consent calendar.
Item number, would the clerk please read the title to item number eleven B?
Item eleven B is Resolution 202250, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Aurora, Colorado, to reconstitute the City of Aurora's efforts around gang reduction intervention and youth violence prevention. And Mayor, we do have one individual to speak on this item.
Very well.
Joel Northam.
It's just Joel, one syllable. My name is Joel. I'm an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and I'm speaking in opposition to this five-point plan, but more specifically about this defunct Aurora gang reduction impact program, this AGRIP thing that y'all are doing. This is Aurora's iteration of like Comstat in Los Angeles and Operation Ceasefire in Boston and so on, other cities that tried this initiative out before. They're trying to market, you're trying to market this as like community policing, you know, because, you know, some of these cases, it involves like involving local nonprofits, involves clergy, gives yourself sort of like a veneer of legitimacy to this program. But it's not really about reducing crime and preventing the emergence. It's about preventing the emergence of people in oppressed and exploited communities becoming an incipient political force, and we see the right through it. AGRIP specifically is just a massive surveillance dragnet for black and brown youth. That's it. AGRIP will undoubtedly come with military-grade surveillance software and a gang database, which will include not just suspected gang members, but their families and anyone else who is loosely connected with them. You could use, you could just be Facebook friends with someone who throws their setup, and you could be put in one of these gang databases. And once you're put into a gang database, you're automatically subject to harassment, harsher treatment by the authorities, and explicit bias in legal settings. This program also is designed to create a network of snitches in order to foster distrust in communities and to basically ruin community cohesion, which ultimately just creates the conditions for violence in these communities. All you have to do is just be labeled a snitch before you get greenlighted. These methods and tactics like those that are being proposed in this five-point plan were developed actually in overseas war zones, which actually says a lot about how you see our communities and see our people. AGRIP, like all of these so-called community policing programs, only is just an expansion of state and police power, which I believe I speak with a good portion of this room, we're vehemently opposed to. AGRIP in this five-point plan do not address any of the underlying causes of the hardships people in marginalized communities face. It's just a selection pool for the prison industry. I'm gonna echo much of the sentiment that is in this room right now, that y'all just wanna throw policing as a solution to everything, when we know, especially with these police out here, that that is not the solution. Y'all are not about justice, you're about expanding state police, state and police power, right? Real justice is helping struggling youth and families, not feeding them to the prison industrial complex. You think that policing in prisons keep people safe, but this country holds 25% of the world's prisoners and spends more money on police than many countries spend on their entire militaries, but nobody is safer because of it.
Sir, I'm sorry, you're reaching your three minutes.
Yeah, I'm done. Don't give any more money to these police.
Let me, for those of us from Aurora, let me review what the code of conduct is in this chamber and others that are here as well. And that is that there is no clapping or demonstration during the conduct of this council meeting. Thank you. Would the clerk now please read the title to item number eleven B?
Mayor, I believe we need to, I already read the title. We need to vote on eleven B.
Very well. Councilmember Lawson. Oh, I think we need a motion first. Removed by Councilmember Lawson, seconded by...
Drinsky.
Seconded by Councilmember Drinsky to approve item number eleven B. How do you want to proceed at this point?
I just wanna make a couple comments.
Very well, please proceed.
Okay. First of all, I want to just say that this program is not going back to the police department. I, this program is, I'm the one who actually, myself and the mayor went and got funding so we could address the youth violence in our community. The AGRIP program would have still been here if it wasn't because of the elimination of the photo red light in 2018 by the voters. This program is just to refocus where we're at now with dealing with the youth violence with our youth. This has nothing to do, the funding is still the same, the program is still the same, it's just putting it, refocusing it, and focusing on the youth violence that we're dealing with and what the current state of what's going on in our, in our community. We need to be more aggressive on intervention, and prevention is important, but this is what this establishes. So when you're going around saying that this is a defunct program, the only reason why it was defunct is because of the photo red light. This is just to address and to refocus where we're at now in our community. Youth are getting shot every single day. So this is just to kind of get us back and have the same resources. Money is not going away. The program is not moving out of the division. It's basically just reallocating the resources to where we need to be for intervention and dealing with our youth. The program can be expanded. The program will be filling the gaps. That's why the leader of the community housing will continue to find out where the gaps are and the needs are. It's not telling nonprofits that they can't apply for funding. We're just focusing more on the intervention section. You, I mean, people can say it's going, it's not going back to the police department. So for that rumor to be out and to say that this program is downsizing, it's not. It's the same program. It's just reallocating the resources. So for that, I hope that I will get support from my... hope that I will get support from my colleagues on this, and hopefully, we can continue to address the youth violence, which has to be done now, and also to actually fill in some of the gaps that are needed, which are, which is kind of what's being done right now. So, thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Mayor Potem?
Yeah, I want to echo what Councilmember Lawson said. She has put a lot of thought into this program. She is the one that originally came up with the youth violence program, that we needed to address all the violence that we're seeing in Aurora and elsewhere in the metro area, and unfortunately, it is affecting our youth in, in terrible ways. We've had, you know, a tremendous number of shootings in our city, and most, I would say, a lot of them involving our young people. And, and to say that this is against people of color, this is actually to help prevent crime against people of color, because they're the ones that are being shot and, and killed. And so, you know, I think it's disingenuous what was said earlier, because this program is about trying to really put the resources towards intervention, and there's actually in the formula for funding, 80% is towards intervention, we need to address this problem now, not six months from now, not a year from now, and then 20% of the funding will go towards prevent, prevention. And so, there are still opportunities for nonprofits to, to apply for funding for the prevention programs. So, I also hope my colleagues will, you know, support this program. It's really important that we address this very important issue in our society.
Further discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Zivonic.
Thanks. I'm, I'm also in support of this resolution, and, and I, I want to just thank Councilmember Lawson for the work she's put into this. When we first heard the presentation from the youth violence prevention program, I was a new member of council, and the thing that stood out to me was, there was a lot of, I think, good intention behind it, but it lacked the focus that the AGRIP program had on going specifically after addressing youth violence. One of the first meetings I had as a candidate was with Omar Montgomery, who's the head of the NAACP here in Aurora, and I asked him at that time, you know, what, what could we do about youth violence? It was a growing problem, and it is still a growing problem in the city. And he said, one of the biggest losses that, that we had in terms of being able to address it, was the loss of the AGRIP program because of the photo, the, the elimination of the photo red light, which was the funding stream for it. The only reason that program, which was, which had a successful track record, went away was because of the loss of funding. What Councilmember Lawson has done is identify another source of funding that's going to allow a more focused program that will help address youth violence in our city. So, I rise in support of this, and I hope my colleagues will too.
Further, oh, sorry, Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly share the goal of reducing youth violence, although, as I've said before, I think that the path to doing that is by addressing the root causes, that is, the underlying conditions that create this kind of, you know, epidemic of violence in not just our city, but all over this country. This is something that's not unique to the City of Aurora, and neither are the conditions in which a lot of communities of color, as you identified, Mayor Potem, you know, live under due to the legacy of institutional racism, redlining, and other forms of discrimination that still plague our communities to this day, and we're still, you know, the after-effects, we're still dealing with to this day. I understand that AGRIP was a beloved program, I've talked to several community members and organizers about it, they liked it. However, the information that we got when we were discussing AGRIP a few weeks back at study session was that it wasn't particularly effective, and the one audit that was done came back inconclusive because it was just really not well-run. So, I understand that you can potentially improve some of that, but at the end of the day, my concern is that we're still being reactive as opposed to being proactive. We're not addressing those underlying conditions in our community that lead to this kind of behavior. And I just want to stress again, when we were discussing our hazard mitigation plan last month, we had several maps in our backup that included socioeconomic data, social vulnerability indexes, ESL areas, educational attainment, and so on and so forth, and you can basically overlay those various data points with where we're having a lot of this violence, and it, it's the same map, folks. So, if we can actually address those root causes, which I maintain, and there's plenty of evidence to show, stem from the social, socioeconomic inequities in our society that are baked in, that have been ongoing for decades, if not a century or more at this point, we will actually start to address the root. And if we don't do that, we're just going to keep throwing good money after bad. The youth violence prevention program, as it stood, as we approved it last year, was absolutely not perfect, but I think it was a much more robust and overarching kind of approach that would do some of what AGRIP does, absolutely. I think AGRIP was, some of the founding principles of AGRIP were incorporated into the youth violence prevention program, but it did more, because we understand, and, you know, our youth violence prevention manager understands, that there's a lot more at play here than just gang intervention, especially when you consider that these gangs that we're dealing with, and I want to throw air quotes around that, because they're not like the Bloods and the Crips. It's my understanding that the Boner Boys, which is one of these, you know, alleged gangs, is actually a Discord server, which is like an AOL chatroom, basically, and people got into beef through that. That's not something that a traditional gang intervention program is going to really address, and I am concerned about the other social impacts that will have if we go this route, you know, through, like, folks basically being thought of as snitches, or just not being able to, you know, build trust with their own social networks, leading to more alienation, leading to a continuation of these bad outcomes that we're seeing. So, I think that we all have good intention here, but I just want to state that we need to redirect our focus to addressing the root causes. I think the youth violence prevention program, as it stood, did a better job at doing that, it could certainly be better, and we can do a much better job at addressing those root causes as a council by actually beginning to invest in our community and make up for these longstanding inequities and injustices that have been allowed to percolate in our city. So, that's where, so with that said, I will not be supporting shifting the current program as it is. I don't think it's going to be as effective as what I've heard other community members ask us to do, and it's certainly not going to be as effective based off of the data that we've seen with what we've already tried. So, you know, what they say about insanity rights, doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results, I would encourage my colleagues to think outside the box and try to reinvest in our community in a meaningful way.
Mayor?
Further discussion? Sorry.
Mayor?
Mayor Potem?
Yeah, I, and I appreciate your comments, Councilmember McConnell. I, when you talk about root causes, that's important, but that's a long ways away. We're talking about, right now, kids shooting each other and killing each other, and we need to address this problem immediately, and that's what this program is intended to do, and that's why we're looking at intervention as a priority. So, as much as I appreciate your thoughts, I think that, that's, I think why a lot of us do want to support this, and want, want to get action right away.
Further discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Murillo?
Thanks, Mayor. Actually, can I get a clarification for the city attorney on procedures regarding calling up an item in the future, specifically resolutions? To the city attorney?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Oh, what is the, are we able to call up a resolution in the future?
Sure.
Okay, can you elaborate on what, what needs to happen at tonight's meeting for that to occur?
So, I, I, are you talking about something that has failed tonight?
No.
And bringing it back?
No.
Or you're just, just bringing up any resolution? So, council always has a prerogative, any council member has a prerogative to put a resolution, you can either go to study session, or you can come directly to the floor, that is a council member's prerogative.
Sorry, to, to be a little bit more clear, in order to bring up a resolution in the future, once it's been voted on, does somebody have to be on the prevailing side of that vote?
So, if this fails, and, and you do have an opportunity, that a member on the prevailing side has to bring it up, because that would, that would mean there would, could be a change of voting.
It's a reconsideration.
It's a reconsideration.
Okay, and then if it passes tonight, is there an opportunity to bring this back up for discussion?
It could be brought back for, again, you can bring it back for a vote for reconsideration.
Okay, and do you have to be still on the prevailing side?
Yes.
Okay. And I do have some comments aside from my questions to the city attorney, Mayor?
Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, I have a couple of thoughts. So, I'm, I was just trying to get some procedural clarification on, on the vote tonight. So, I don't, I don't have anything against supporting youth violence prevention. I think my issue with this resolution lies in a few kind of other areas. So, when we were first given a presentation on this youth violence prevention program, we'd hired a program manager, I believe is the correct title, and there was a, you know, well-vet, well-researched plan, five-year plan that was established. There was community input from actual youth, hundreds of youth, giving input on the types of programming that needed to, to happen through the City of Aurora to truly impact youth violence prevention. And that's the program that I was sold on, that's the program that we built, trusting relationships through the city, and talking more about what youth violence prevention, like a true program, looks like. You know, after, you know, this, during this year, I don't know if it's because of the change in political composition of our council, but suddenly, this youth violence prevention program, robust program, turned very narrowly. So, we're taking back this very database, or data-driven, like, researched program that we presented to community, was presented at emergency community meetings after the Hinckley and Central shootings. We're, we're taking that away, essentially, and we're just focusing it on gang violence prevention. So, I do not support the fact that we are going to be reducing the potential impact in services that community has asked for, and that we, as a city council, or rather, our representative, as our, the youth violence prevention manager, shared the focus of this, of this program. I feel like we, we said one thing to community, and then now that, that has changed, and so I don't support, I don't support that reduction in scope, because that is not, I mean, AGRIP was, you know, you, you could debate the merits of how successful AGRIP was, but if you have read any of that evidence-based research, AGRIP was very, was only focused on gang reduction and intervention. I refuse to say that youth violence prevention is gang reduction. They are not synonymous, and that rhetoric really frustrates me about the direction of this conversation. Our youth are not just in gangs. There, that is one part of a larger conversation around violent crimes and, and our youth, and our youth were very explicit about some of the other areas that they needed support with, and this shift fundamentally changes that. So, I, I have issues with the way that it was initially presented to community, and now the, the shift in the focus is, is only associating, we're saying the resolution is youth violence prevention, and in, in the policy, we're saying that is equal to gang, gangs and youth, and that's not okay with me. I will be supporting this, only for, in, in the hopes that my, perhaps we might have an additional discussion in the future. It was just stated that I need to be on the prevailing side to reconsider the, the conversation, so that's something that I'm hoping to be able to do in the future. Again, I have nothing against supporting and funding programs for youth violence prevention. I 100% support, support that, but for those structural issues and the difference between what community was, what was shared with community and the scope of this project, I don't support it, but like I said, on a procedural note, I'll be supporting for that reason.
Further discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Coombs.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to get some clarification on what it means to be shifting 80% of the funding into reinstituting AGRIP, because the, the program that was presented to us had a majority of the funding already going to intervention, and then a lesser portion of the funding going to primary and secondary prevention. So, can the youth violence prevention manager, can you answer, would this be basically just relabeling the, the intervention efforts that you already were planning to undertake, or is this changing the direction of the program in terms of the intervention programs that you had proposed?
Questionist staff?
This is Christina, program manager for your youth violence prevention program. I apologize that I'm joining virtually, I'm getting over a cold. As far as the funding, the, the shift in funding would essentially still support the, the funding recommendations that were outlined initially, with a smaller percentage going towards upstream prevention efforts. The major change in shift from AGRIP to AGRIP would impact more, not necessarily the, the funding, but more so on, on the programmatic side of things. And so, that would essentially, if, if we're only being directed to do what AGRIP called for, we're only serving high-risk identified gang members, which is a, a smaller population of what YBP is currently serving and looks to serve.
Mayor?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not finished, can I?
Please proceed.
Didn't know.
So, just to clarify, that means that we wouldn't be doing the same intervention programming as was presented to us, it's a narrower intervention programming and lesser prevention programming as well?
That's, that's correct, yes.
Okay.
So, AGRIP only focused on higher-risk gang members, whereas we're focusing on at-risk and high-risk, which is really important, especially considering that most of our violent crime is not being committed by identified gang members.
Okay, thank you. So, with that being stated, that's really, my objection is, you know, it's already been stated by Councilmember Murillo as well, is framing all of our intervention efforts as being only focused on gangs, because what that really means, actually, is that we're going to continue to let youth shoot each other, because we're not going to be identifying and intervening in situations where youth are at risk of engaging in that violence or being victimized by that violence. And so, that, you know, I think we could say we want to shift 80% of the funding to intervention, and only 20% on prevention, that I would support, even though I think our staff gave us those recommendations of those funding amounts for reasons that were grounded in data, I'd be willing to say, you know what, we just still, as a council, want to prioritize intervention. What I'm not willing to say is that we want to prioritize only intervention in gangs, and not put any resources to ensuring that all of the youth in our community that are at risk for being victimized by or engaging in violence, that not all of them are going to be served. So, that's really, for me, a deal breaker. I think we need to acknowledge that there are all of those other risk and protective factors that were presented to us by our staff based on a study that they conducted and a very in-depth community needs assessment. So, I can't support this for that reason, only because we're really leaving out so many people by making it focused on gangs.
Mayor?
Mayor Potem, then Mayor, then Councilmember Lawson.
Okay. When we, when we made the decision on the, on the allocation and said 80% was to go to intervention and 20% to prevention, my understanding is that is directing the RFP process, is that not correct, Christina?
Staff response?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question, please?
When we said that we wanted 80% to go to intervention and 20% to go to prevention, my understanding was that we were saying that that was the direction for the RFP process, that that was giving you some focus on, on how to, how to do the RFP?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lawson.
Well, I think it's very interesting, I'm kind of disappointed in Christina. It says Section 2 on this is to support this collaborative approach to reduce gang and youth violence in the city. The city council approves of AGRIP funding to be allocated as 80%, as we discussed, and dedicate it to intervention efforts, and 20% of funding to be dedicated directly to prevention. This says reduce gang and youth violence in the city. So, I just don't see this as just gangs, it's looking at it from a bigger perspective. So, I, I disagree with what's been said. This is not, this program is just to refocus and redirect this program. This program, when we, it was presented, when I first presented this, this proposal last year, along with the mayor, I said I wanted this to be AGRIP 2.0, meaning, yeah, AGRIP had some issues, but it also had some gaps that could be expanded to make it better. We are doing the RFP process for the We are doing the RFP process for the nonprofits. So where this is going, that nonprofits can apply and the same ones cannot, I don't even know where that's coming from. So again, I do not just see this as a program for gangs, it's for youth violence, period. So you can, you can say whatever, Section 2 of what this, this, this resolution says and youth violence. So again, I hope that my colleagues will support.
Further discussion.
Mayor?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Medina, then Councilmember Coombs.
Just to give a little more clarification, because I'm probably one of the few people that has actually worked with AGRIP for about five years, the first five years that it was implemented in Northwest Aurora. So just to give some context on that, I was one of the community members working at Morhead Rec Center as the facilitator of that facility, working with AGRIP on those specific things. They were targeting specifically gang members. And that's the issue that I have as well, is just that we're putting in the word gang, and once you do that, we take away everything else. The other youth are just that, they're other youth. We're going to label them as gangs. We're not even going to look at them as just troubled youth or whatever. I don't like all these labels that we put on youth. I've asked that of youth that I work with. They don't like that, that all of a sudden I get in an altercation and now I'm going to be labeled a gang member because I get in a fight in school over something. I don't want that put on kids, I wouldn't want it put on my own children if they have an altercation. I think we, as a group and as a community, haven't addressed the issue of the gun itself. What's the concept of, how do they mitigate? I think it all goes back to if, some of you went to the meetings, which I attended, some councilmembers did as well, where one of the youth was asked why he concealed, carried a weapon and concealed it. Now, doesn't that sound just like what we do as adults? We have conceal and carry weapons, correct? We have that as adults. The only difference is, they can't do it because it's not legal. They're not of legal age to do that. And what did the gentleman say when he said why he carried it? It was because he felt unsafe. Wasn't because he was a gang member, it was because he felt unsafe. Isn't that the same concept people are carrying and concealing? Because they don't feel safe. So what's the difference between an adult doing that and yet a youth can't do that, yet the premise is the same? They're trying to protect themselves from others that would want to do them harm. So I, I just beg the question that if we're going to really implement this, that we need to take the word gang out of it if at all possible? I certainly could support, and I would want to be engaged personally, again, because I have those relationships in those communities, so that I can make sure that we're addressing those needs, what many councilmembers said, the root causes, the poverty, a lot of different factors, the mental health, there's a lot of different things that are going on in these communities and these families that create this opportunity.
Councilmember Coombs.
Yeah, so I just want to be clear that my objection is not about the nonprofits that can apply, because that keeps being appealed to as an issue. My issue is, what are the actual programs that we're implementing and what youth are we going to be working with? That's my concern. And how are we going to be working with those youth? So I just wanted to be very clear about that. It doesn't really matter to me which nonprofits apply or what funding they get, it's that programmatically, we are not saying that the only violence that we're going to focus on, or even the main violence that we're going to focus on, is gangs.
Mayor?
Further discussion, Mayor Portem.
It, I mean, it states in the resolution that this is, yes, it addresses gangs as well, but it also addresses just plain youth, youth violence. And this, this program is about preventing youth violence, intervening, trying to do what we need to do, which we have an obligation to our young people to try to prevent this, and that's what this is about. I think we're, we're getting really off topic because this, this has teeth in terms of funding. We will get funding, we will get programs funding to help address the youth violence.
Mayor?
Councilmember Coombs.
Then I guess my question is, then why are we saying AGRIP, which is a gang-specific program? Why don't we just say we're shifting the prioritization of funding within the youth violence prevention program? Why are we making it about AGRIP and about gangs if our intent is not to primarily make it about gangs?
Further discussion.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Let me go, Councilmember Zavonic, then Mayor Portem.
Again, I want to go back to the, just the plain language of this resolution. In the second, where as it says, "In an effort to end violence among youth, the city of Aurora launched the Aurora Gang Reduction Impact Program." AGRIP was about intervening in youth violence. Bringing this back is a way to make a more focused and intentional effort on our, on our part to address youth violence in our city. The youth violence prevention program, as it was presented to us earlier this year, end of last year, was a mile wide and an inch deep. This is more focused and will give us a better chance at actually addressing the problem that we have of youth violence in our city.
Mayor Portem.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I was just going to add that the AGRIP program really has a good foundation. If you, if you do the research on, on the program, it may not have been executed years ago to its fullest capacity, but it has a really good foundation, and that's why we chose to revert back to that program.
Further discussion.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Councilmember Murillo.
Thank you. I've gotten feedback on passing resolutions before, that they are not laws, direction, so I want to be clear there. The title is Aurora Gang Reduction Impact Program. I don't know, to me, that means that the main focus is Aurora Gang Reduction Impact. There is language, you know, kind of catch-all language, which I'm appreciative of, and I think is kind of honoring that more intersectional approach, but I don't know how else you read that and not understand that gang violence prevention towards youth is not the main focus of this program, which, as we've stated and we've heard from community, the manager got like several hundred youth in Aurora to take surveys, to, you know, attend community meetings, they've talked with other stakeholders to give feedback, and that was one small area of other areas that were important. I don't know how else to say that, for that to be more clear. And kind of the, to the, I guess the program itself, like AGRIP is implementing a comprehensive gang model, and that is going to be limited in scope. There's, when I say data-based, evidence-based, that's what I'm talking about. Like there is entire theories and research around the scope of this type of program, and it is certainly still missing, my larger point, that it's, is we're reducing the focus and reducing the services that we're going to be offering our youth. So I, I'm clear that that's what's going to happen. I welcome a future conversation where we talk about maybe delineating that a little bit more. Like I said, that was my hope in, in supporting this, that we might be able to bring this up at a future conversation, that this doesn't have to be the last conversation. That always feels so, so heavy, you know, one vote and it's done, which is the process for voting on a resolution. So I just want to be clear that that's, that's how this is going to work. And to me, the language is very plain in just even the title. And again, I welcome an additional, additional conversations to suss out and clarify, you know, maybe, maybe it doesn't have to just be a gang reduction, but AGRIP is not the same, you know, gang reduction is, does not equal youth violence prevention. And then I guess another point is, my colleague, Councilmember Zavonic, referenced a conversation with a very well-known leader, Omar Montgomery of the NAACP, and I'm glad that you had that conversation, but just wanted to clarify, did Omar Montgomery approve of the representation of that conversation? Because it kind of alluded that, that he was supporting this, so I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I didn't want to make--
Wait to be, oh, sorry. Councilmember Zavonic.
I didn't want to--
You were not recognized.
I didn't want to suggest that Mr. Montgomery supported this resolution. I just wanted to make sure that I stated a very clear fact, which was that when he and I sat and met and I asked him what we could do to address youth violence in the city, as I was getting some input from him throughout my campaign, or in that particular instance, he suggested that the, which I was at that time unaware of, he suggested the AGRIP program in its loss was a loss to the city and that it was just simply because of the photo red light revenue stream that went away, and not because it was a failed program, but that in fact it was a good program.
But not that he, sorry, Mayor?
Members will wait to be recognized. Councilmember Murillo.
Mayor, I believe I corrected myself before you obnoxious gavel, but go ahead. Councilmember Zavonic, so just to be clear, I just, you're not saying that Omar Montgomery of the NAACP, very well-respected black leader in this community, very heavily focused in gang violence and youth violence prevention and all of the above, is necessarily supporting this? He have, he has, might have mentioned that AGRIP might have been a, you know, in an isolated conversation, that that might have been supported, but, but that he's not specifically supporting this situation here.
Mayor?
Councilmember Zavonic.
No matter how many times you ask and how many different words you use, the answer is still yes. He did not say tonight, or in reference to tonight's vote, that he was supportive of it.
Mayor Jurinsky.
Councilmember Jurinsky.
I wasn't done, okay.
This has been a wonderful--
Councilmember Jurinsky.
This has been a wonderful conversation, but I would like to call for the vote.
The motion is called for the question, it is a non-debatable motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Jurinsky, second by Mayor Portem Bergen. Call for the question. Would the clerk, please read the roll.
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor votes yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor, who had the second with Councilmember Jurinsky's motion?
Councilmember Portem Bergen.
Mayor Portem Bergen, okay. My apologies, we're changing the vote.
I can't hear Councilmember Jurinsky. She's addressing the council, I can't hear her.
Be no comments from the audience.
I don't know.
The vote?
Okay, it is now open and he's scribed for councilmembers to vote on the motion to vote for the, call for the vote for the resolution. Councilmember Medina?
No.
Councilmember Murillo? Yes. The motion passes with no votes from Councilmember Coombs, Councilmember Marcano, and Councilmember Medina to call for the vote.
Question before us now is the adoption of--
Mayor Portem.
I'm sorry, 11B, Councilmember Coombs.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
No. There's no substitute motion to, is there? I don't believe, City Attorney, there's a call for, it's a subtle question, it already passed, the motion already passed, it's a subtle question.
No, the motion didn't pass yet. We haven't voted on this item, so it's a substitute motion to--
The call for, the call for the question.
To approve this resolution.
The question before us now is the adoption of 11B, item number 11B. Would clerk please call the roll?
Mayor, do we have a motion and second on the floor to adopt this resolution?
I'm sorry, I'm, what's it?
So you can now vote on the main motion?
Right, the question before us is the adoption of item number 11B.
That's correct. I'm sorry.
Does it require a first, a second?
There is a first and second already, so you're to the point of voting at this point.
We're prepared to vote now. Call for the question, was, was passed.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Lawson and then second by Councilmember Jurinsky, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. The vote has been opened and he's scribed. The motion passes with seven yeses, with no votes from Councilmember Marcano, Councilmember Medina, and Councilmember Coombs. Mayor?
Councilmember Murillo.
Yeah, I would just like to go on the record amending my initial vote. I was confused, I was still frightened by the gavel. I couldn't even think straight. I'm still struggling, sorry. I initially thought the first vote was on the, the entire resolution as opposed to calling for the vote. My apologies, I did not agree with calling for the vote, but was going to support the resolution.
City Attorney.
So I'm lost on the number of votes.
Okay, so for the call for the question--
Passed.
We had-- We had eight yes and three no.
So Councilmember Murillo would just like it to reflect.
Okay, we will change that to seven yes for no, with Councilmember Murillo voting no to call the question.
And we can move to the next item.
Would clerk now please read the title to item number 11C.
Item 11C is Resolution 2022-51, consideration to approve a resolution for the First Amendment to the amended and restated IGA between the city of Aurora and the RTD for the initial parking management plan for the I-Lift Station Parking Garage.
Read presentation by staff.
Good evening, my name is Scott Baumann, I'm the parking manager within Public Works. I am seeking approval of a First Amendment to an existing amended and restated IGA with RTD for the parking management plan and operations of the I-Lift Station Parking Garage. This First Amendment is only, extends the current IGA for an additional two years to February of 2024. All other pre-existing IGA terms and conditions remain in place. This IGA allows the city to fully manage and operate all day-to-day operational aspects of the I-Lift Station Parking Garage on behalf of RTD. This garage service is performed currently by Laz Parking through our outside vendor Park Aurora Enforcement Program. This IGA, this IGA with RTD also outlines the requirements and responsibilities required of the city at the garage. Beyond maintaining and operating the garage, there are requirements for ongoing reporting and the management of a dynamic pricing strategy plan to monitor the variable pricing aspects of the commuter usage of the garage. RTD has already approved and signed this IGA amendment. Without this proposed amendment, the IGA would automatically expire this month and would leave RTD and the I-Lift Garage without an active operator, and we wouldn't have any involvement in the operations of the garage. If you have any questions regarding the approval of this resolution, I'm happy to--
Questions to staff.
Mayor?
Councilmember Marcano.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Scott, for the presentation. Just have a quick question for you. A refresh my memory here, the garage is fully paid for already, correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
All right, great, so Mayor, can I follow up?
Please proceed.
All right, thank you. So I'm wondering, you know, in an effort to incentivize ridership, have you investigated potentially dropping or just eliminating the fare? I understand that, or the parking fees, rather, I understand that they would incur a recurring cost to the city, to the tune of around, what, $30,000 if I'm not mistaken, per year? Is that something that you have all discussed?
So the specific RGA really is a pilot program with RTD. RTD wants to know, and we're the only site in their, in their entire program that allows for parking on the first day. So what that does is, they want to know the elasticity of what pricing in the garage does for ridership. So this is a specific program that they want to see pricing and what it does and how it changes the demand for the, for the garage. So I don't see the, I mean, the price to some degree could go down to zero. Right now, it's a dollar fifty for the first day. It's been on hold now for, you know, the last two years because of COVID, ridership is down, so we've kind of put a hold on that dynamic pricing component of the garage. But we're right now working with communications, we're going to start doing some marketing and advertising and get that going again, and ridership is picking up and the garage usage is picking up, so I do anticipate the garage rates being lowered at some point, and, you know, it would be staged down in increments with RTD's approval. So they want, they want to see pricing at the garage. They want to see, because they're modeling it elsewhere, so at some point, RTD is going to be charging all their lots and garages, you know, system-- So at some point, RTD is going to be charging all their lots and garages, you know, system-wide, and they're using the data from this garage to determine what's the correct pricing and so forth.
All right, thank you.
Further questions to staff?
Mayor.
Councilmember Mario.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you. I have more of a comment. I'm looking forward to see how this kind of develops. I was the co-chair of the RTD Accountability Committee. One of the big areas of conversation was kind of the fiscal solvency of RTD and how to kind of maintain the system that is really far-reaching with kind of COVID exacerbating a lower ridership. So I'm very curious to see, one, just to back up a little bit, there was even state legislation that was passed, I believe in the last session, that gave RTD the flexibility to explore this area as a potential source of revenue to make the larger system sustainable. That wasn't previously an option, so I'm very curious to see how this kind of pans out, and, you know, just wanted to offer that comment, and thank you for bringing this up.
You're welcome.
Okay, a motion is in order. Are there further questions to staff? Seeing none, a motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Marcano.
Thank you, sir. Move to approve 11C.
Moved by Councilmember Marcano, second by...
Bergen.
Second by Mayor Portem Bergen to approve item number 11C. Further discussion? I see no further discussion. The motion before us is the adoption of item 11C. Call for the question.
The motion passes unanimously to approve Resolution 2022-51.
The time is now 7:37. Council will stand in recess until 7:45 to give staff the opportunity to make another announcement for the call-in line.
Members of the public who would like to speak on an ordinance and have not already spoken to an operator, press star three before the item is called by the clerk. For those watching on Channel 8, call 855-695-3475 to be connected, and then press star three. Council is taking a short break to allow any additional speakers to sign up. Please be patient and stay on the line until the operator is able to take down your information. Keep in mind, you must press star three before the clerk calls the, and reads the title of the item you wish to speak on. Thank you.
The Aurora City Council is back in session. Will Clerk please read the title? Clerk, please read the title to item number 12A.
Item 12A is Public Hearing with Related Ordinance, Ordinance 2022-11, Public Hearing in Consideration of an Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Aurora, Colorado, Rezoning 10.532 Acres of Land, More or Less Generally Located North of Jewel Avenue and East of the Plains Conservation Center within the City of Aurora, County of Arapahoe, State of Colorado, From Parks and Open Space District to Accident-Potential Zone District, Clear Zone Subarea, and Admitting the Zone Map Accordingly, Buckley Space Force Parcel Rezone.
Public hearing on item number 12A is now open. Presentation by staff.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kaufman and Council members. My name is Karen Hancock and I'm a Principal Planner in the Planning and Development Services Department. The item before you this evening is a request by city staff on behalf of Buckley Space Force Base to rezone a 10-acre parcel recently acquired by Buckley. The subject parcel on tonight's agenda was transferred to Buckley from the city in exchange for a parcel located on the northeast corner of the base. This small parcel is very important for Buckley to have within their control as it is located in their accident potential zone and additionally in the clear zone subarea right at the end of the runway. The current zoning is POS or Parks and Open Space and the requested zoning is Accident Potential Zone. POS zoning allows some passive land uses like trailheads and stormwater ponds. The APC District Clear Zone Subarea prevents no active or passive land uses unless requested by Buckley. The Clear Zone Subarea must remain vacant for the safety of the pilots and to support the base's flying missions. Rezoning will assure that the parcel remains vacant and with no active or passive land uses as long as there is a flying mission at the base. Buckley staff sent a letter to the city manager, Jim Twombly, requesting this rezone and asking for the city to act as the applicant. That concludes my presentation.
Presentation by the applicant.
We are the applicant on behalf of Buckley Space Force Base.
You're both, okay. Is there any, does there, any member of the public that wishes to be heard on this issue?
No, Mayor.
Are the questions of staff or staff representing the applicant from members of council?
Uh, Mayor?
Uh, Mayor Protam.
Yes, you mentioned that we're changing it so that passive or active would not be allowed anymore, so, but you had an exception in there, what was that?
Unless Buckley requested it.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
No further questions? Seeing no further questions, motion is in, the public hearing is now closed. Motion is in order.
Mayor, I move to adopt 12.
Moved by Councilmember Sundberg, seconded by?
Jurenski.
A Councilmember Jurenski to adopt item number 12A. Further discussion? Seeing none, call for the question on item number 12A.
The motion passes unanimously to approve Ordinance 2022-11.
I will now relinquish the gavel to the Mayor Protam to run the meeting concerning item 14A and the companion resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. Katie, do we have public invited first?
Yes, we have 25 individuals in person and 18 on the phone line.
And do you need to read the ordinance first or we just have public invited first?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's introduction of Ordinance 2022-12, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Aurora, Colorado, adding a new section to be numbered 94122 to the City Code pertaining to prohibiting unauthorized camping on public or private property and adding Article 4, Section 114106 through 114112 to Chapter 114 pertaining to abating unauthorized camps on public property. And the first individual is Deborah Johnson.
Good evening, my name is Deborah Johnson. I'm here to thank you for the opportunity to speak in opposition to this Ordinance 22-12 unauthorized camping ban. I realize this ordinance is trying to deal with a delicate balance between homelessness, affordable housing, and quality of life for surrounding neighborhoods. However, we need to be respectful of these people and the situation they are in. It is appalling that the first aspect the city promotes with this ordinance is aesthetics. Yes, sanitation, public health, and safety are mentioned, but aesthetics is first. I do not like seeing people living in the High Line Canal near my house, but also know there isn't sufficient affordable housing in Denver metro area or services to accommodate their needs. Also, Section 114, which is a section of the Aurora City Code this ordinance is being placed, is labeled "solid waste." Is this how Aurora leaders are classifying these encampments and the people that live in them, solid waste? There are other sections of the City Code that may be better representation, like Section 62, Environment, or Section 74, Health and Sanitation. The concentration, the consideration of this ordinance is premature. Just tonight, a resolution, a resolution is being introduced directing the city manager to look for and create shelter options for authorized camp, unauthorized camping. I would recommend the information gathered from the city manager would be part of the council decision-making process on the necessity and the ability to enforce this ordinance. In addition, this ordinance does not specify what agency or department in the city will be responsible for writing the rules and regulations for its implementation. You mentioned earlier, ordinance is law, not an implementation plan. Please do your homework before you pass this law. Make sure there are resources and administrative structure available to enforce the ordinance. As I stated, this is, the passing of this ordinance is premature. Please vote no or postpone the vote until there is sufficient information to make a sound decision. And then in reference to your resolution, I just want to add, I know that these two were put together. I think that this resolution needs to have a timeframe. The city manager is to look for and create the, maintain the options. And who is the beneficiary of this information? City Council, Housing Authority? It's unclear who will benefit from this information. I would like to see at minimum these two items added to that resolution. Thank you.
Next speaker, Jim Kickbush.
Good evening. This is my first time, by the way. My name is Jim Kickbush. I want to thank you, Mayor Kaufman, and City Council, especially the new conservative ones. Thank you. I support the camping ban, or whatever you want to call it. I live next to Toll Creek and it has gotten out of hand. You can't even walk your animals anymore. Please vote yes for this. Thank you very much.
Next is Ryan Hanby.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I want to begin by just saying I've spoken in a public comment many times and I've never seen the amount of police in the chambers or in the room out front as I see tonight. And I see it as a blatant act of intimidation of people who have come here tonight to speak. I can't see it as anything other than that. I want to speak in opposition to the camping abatement ordinance. I want to echo what the first speaker said, that I think it's coming without the proper research being done. There isn't a set point in time count for the number of homeless people that are in Aurora. I don't understand how you can just say that we need to ban, ban homeless people, which is, which is really what this does, bans homelessness outside of shelters, without knowing how many people are homeless in this city. I also think that without, without a set amount of money that's going to shelters, I, I, I don't understand how you can, you know, just sweep homeless people away. I'm not a resident of Aurora, I'm a resident of Denver. I live in the East Colfax neighborhood and I know that many of the people that became homeless in Denver have moved into, into Aurora. And I think that, you know, this is what sweeps do. The sweep program in Denver has failed miserably and just continued to move people from place to place. And every time people are moved, they lose, they lose all of their possessions, you know, into these trash trucks that come along with the sweeps. I also just want to say that I really don't think that the Aurora Police Department is up to the job of enforcing this camping abatement ban. It's under a consent decree right now. I believe we all know what happened with the murder of Elijah McLean. And I think that this body has proven that it's unable to effectively interact with members of the community, and I would include people who don't have homes within that community. I think that, you know, many, many homeless people have, have jobs as well. And something that happens is, you know, when homeless people go to their job during the day, then a sweep comes and they come back at the end, at the end of the, at the end of their working day and they've lost absolutely everything in a sweep. And I, I just, there's so many things that I don't see in this, in this plan. And I think really what we see here is that it's not, it's not just an oversight, but it's an attempt by the new conservative majority of this board to do something for aesthetics alone for.
I'm sorry, sir, you're reaching your three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure you'll hear from the rest of the folks tonight, the rest of what I was going to say.
Next is David Kabari. David?
If I could ask the, everyone in the chambers, we do appreciate you being here and we appreciate, we want to hear from you. If you could just please be respectful, I think both sides can agree to that. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing time to speak on this. I'm here primarily because I'm confused why this camping ban has gotten so far. Apologize, I'm not the most eloquent, but this, this ban has been, this type of thing has been tried in multiple cities across the US. It's failed in Austin, it continues to fail in Denver. It has a lot of legal liabilities to it, that's why it's being called a camping ban and not a ban on homelessness, right? But primarily, you know, my issue, and I think everybody's, everyone here, their issue with it would primarily be how much it's going to cost. This is, this is going to kick back on the taxpayers big time. The, the cost of this program in Denver, there is a specific audit going on right now for it because of how much it is impacting the city's bottom line. There, the contract to remove that material is a toxic one. I, you know, I've been on hazmat cleanup teams, the, no one wants to touch this contract. There, the, the big-ticket customers that form the base of, of your, say like an environmental firm that would, that would go out to bid for this, they do not want to be doing business with a company that is going to do this kind of business. Not to mention when you have people get on site and all of a sudden there's a propane tank or a canister of gasoline, now all of those technicians then have to be 40-hour hazwapper trained. That's a change order, right? And that's what the city of Denver is facing right now, is this massively ballooning contract that is costing them a lot of money. In addition to this, and I, I think the, this is the prime reason why this has come up and why this has gotten so far, is this increases the number of interactions between the public and the police. That's why the FOP wants this so, so bad. Because you increase those number of interactions, you increase your funding ask when it comes budget time. And when that happens, there's not existing revenue streams for this, right? You're going to have to pull some, some new one in. We have already set up a bunch of, you know, bad arrangements with metro districts that are bleeding us dry. This is going to be the nail in the coffin. Aside from all of the, you know, you may think I'm like a bleeding heart or something like that.
Sir, you're, you're reaching your three minutes, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'll at least postpone it, at least postpone it to do some more research. I'd love to talk individually with some of you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Danny Moore.
Good afternoon. Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Danny Moore. I'm a 24-year retired military veteran. I've worked in Aurora for 27 years. I raised my childrens here. I have a small business in Aurora. So you see, I did not just discover Aurora. I want to encourage you to be strong tonight. This is not a perfect first step, but it is a first step. I'm here tonight to advocate for the passing of the unauthorized camping abatement ordinance. A favorite American poet named James John Holmes once said, "There's no exercise better for the heart than reaching down and lifting someone up." This is what I'm here to encourage you to do tonight. It is not enough for our citizens to be placed on the sidewalk or under a bridge or in our sewers. As a state, we're better than that. We are our brothers' keepers. And sometimes that means we have to help our citizens where they don't seem to know they need help. For you see, as a county, we are better than that. There are many reasons why I could oppose the camping ban. Safety, it's just not safe for our citizens to live on the street unprotected. Environmental, it's only a matter of time before we start to see the toll it takes of having human waste run along our streets. I would ask you, why do we have an ordinance to pick up animal waste, but it's okay for our fellow citizens to have their waste run down our streets? But neither of these are the reasons that I, that I am for this. It is simply inhumane. I want better for our citizens. We must act as a village to lift up our fellow citizens. The homeless problem has become like many of the solvable problems of our time. It is now too profitable to allow it to be solved. Millions are spent to keep our fellow citizens on the streets. Our empathy for public camping has created a hammock that prevents people who need the most help from getting it. No man, woman, or child should be forced to accept the lowest of what our society offers. To do so is beneath us and we are better than that. Tonight, we have the opportunity to lead, to lead with cities like Colorado Springs in taking tangible steps to end homelessness in our town and creating a public and private venture. Now is the time. We must do what is right. We must provide the help where it's needed because this is Aurora and we are better than that. Thank you, and I encourage you to vote yes.
Next is Nate Cassa.
Good evening. My name is Nate and I'm an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I've lived in Aurora for more than 10 years and this proposed camping abatement is a disgrace. What makes it even more disgraceful is the mayor's claim that this plan is compassionate. Was this compassion the mayor found after his one-week stunt pretending to be homeless, where he concluded homelessness is a lifestyle choice? This ordinance is an extra infringement on homeless people. You already spent my money to sweep 80 people just last year. I personally know a social worker in the Denver area whose job is to find employment and housing for people experiencing homelessness. And one of the biggest barriers to employment and housing, she says, is that when her clients lose vital documents like their IDs, social security cards, birth certificates, and immigration paperwork, and phones in sweeps, it delays their ability to connect, apply for jobs, and work on housing by months and in most cases, years. I wonder if the mayor were to be on the other side of one of these sweeps and have his life completely uprooted, would he still call them compassionate? Is it compassionate to increase the presence of APD on these people? Did I dream it, or just a few, a couple of years ago, did we not watch thousands of people in Aurora flood the streets in response to the crimes of APD, who are in endless scandals? This is the department that is under a consent decree right now for the unbelievable racism and brutalization that they enact on our people. And how is a solution to give them more money? That just does not make sense. How many poor people of color have APD beaten, brutalized, killed, and abused? Not to mention the city already gives them millions of dollars and this crooked police department pays out millions and millions of settlements after abusing our community and they still want to give 6 million more in retention bonuses for police officers? Instead, our money should be used to fund housing immediately for these homeless people instead of killing and brutalizing us. And rather than dehumanizing and degrading poor people, we need to treat them as human. We need to stop the sweeps. They deserve clean, safe, decent, and permanent housing. So we say housing and not sweeps. Vote against this ordinance. Thank you.
Caitlin Amick. Applause. Thank you. Caitlin Amick.
I don't see any real solutions for the unhoused community in the five-point action plan and camping ban. I only see an incredible amount of problems. The camping ban would increase face time between APD and the community, as well as funnel more money into that department instead of using that money for any real tangible solutions for the people and people suffering from homelessness. Any proposal that would encourage additional time policing, aka terrorizing communities, is obviously a dangerous decision for your constituents. A mere six months ago, an independent investigation on APD and Aurora Fire Rescue found that they have a pattern and practice of violating state and federal laws. In this proposal, it would increase patrols in key neighborhoods, but the independent investigation found that the Aurora Police has a pattern and practice of racially policing. So we know that that means increased patrols in black and brown communities. Once they're patrolling those communities, all people become at risk since APD has a pattern and practice of using excessive force. Expanding the practice of police enforced displacement of homeless people is just bringing more risk of confrontation, fines, jail time, and trauma to an already very marginalized group, and it offers no meaningful support. It was found APD already had a misplaced view of de-escalation and they don't focus on avoiding unnecessary escalation in the first place. So why would we ever allow a department with such a stained track record to have such a huge role of any anti-homeless measures? And why would we accept such a weak plan from someone who enthusiastically went undercover homeless because that clearly was a classist, repulsive, and disgusting stunt? Vote no, and please find a plan that actually addresses the underlying problems facing the community instead of criminalizing being homeless and poor.
Dakota Dexter.
My name is Dakota. I'm with the Party for Socialism and Liberation here in Aurora. As a resident in Aurora, I think it is appalling that certain council members and even the mayor have the audacity to suggest that homeless, the homelessness crisis in this city can be solved with more police and violent sweeps. Just last year, while the mayor was pretending to be homeless, the city conducted 80 sweeps. I have witnessed sweeps up close and they are violent. How much more violence does the mayor think this community deserves? As every member of this council and even the mayor knows, there is only one solution to homelessness. Housing. Not police, not sweeps, housing. Anything less is simply cruelty. Stop playing politics with people's lives. If you care at all about the most vulnerable people in this community, vote no on this camping ban.
Elle.
Hello, my name is Elle. I'm also with the Party for Socialism and Liberation in Aurora. You really don't make this like a welcoming experience. You know, I've been sitting here, as everyone has, for however long we've been here, an hour, hour and change. And something that's really struck me is it seems like the members of this council have a confused perspective on the difference between supporting their community and condemning community members to being subject to violence. The violence of being labeled a gang member, the violence of fractured communities due to clumsy and profit-driven state intervention, the violence of losing all of their possessions and their home. Everything we've heard forth tonight, this camping ban, AGRIP, these, which are both part of this five-point program, they all seek to terrorize marginalized people in Aurora rather than supporting them. The money, the house, the money to house the houseless and support the youth exists. You just refuse to listen to the people when they tell you what they need and how to allocate that money. It's also very striking to me that Mayor Kaufman, you introduced a version of this camping ban in August and it didn't pass. You needed to wait six months before reintroducing it. And rather than using that six months to really address the underlying causes of the challenges faced in these communities, you simply brought the same plan back. Sweeps are still cruel. They're still a waste of time and energy and they still create all of the problems that you've heard people mention tonight. Six months didn't change that. So I hope that this council will listen to the people who are here tonight and I hope that you will vote no on this camping ban.
Joelle Northam.
Hi, it's Joel with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. Speaking in opposition to the proposed camping ban that you're trying to push through. Also just want to note that as an aside, that nobody that's been through poverty could ever give any legitimacy to your finding that homelessness is a lifestyle choice, as if your few days pretending to be homeless give you some sort of special insight to the plight of the poor and disenfranchised, especially since you live a life of privilege and luxury. That was a vacation for you and if you really wanted something to prove, you could just go back to Haditha, Iraq, where you were tasked with covering up war crimes as a civil affairs officer. I digress. This camping ban is cruel, it's inhumane, and it's noteworthy that when Mike Kaufman was asked about how shelter might be created to support the resolution, he didn't have an answer for it and said, "Oh, well, we'll just wait till that resolution passes," or something like that. Now, call me cynical, but I think that you have absolutely no intention of doing anything with regards to social protections for those people. Call me cynical, but I think that the conservative wing of this council just wants to use this in order to hide the larger systemic housing issues in Aurora. You know, of course, to make way to attract private investment and other money and interest and things like that. That's what I think. That's what I think. You actually have the means to create more social housing to solve this issue. You could do something about the ever-increasing inaccessibility to housing in Aurora. You have the means to expand social protections, vocational training programs, et cetera, more generally, but instead, you'd rather commit resources to just shuffling people around endlessly, people who have nothing, and then what, like fining them? You do realize that people don't have anything, right? So when you fine them, they can't pay you, right? You do understand that? Just basic logic, right? The problem is that some of y'all just absolutely hate your non-moneyed constituents, and you see them as a pestilence instead of human beings who have the same need for shelter and economic security as you do. This resolution will only contribute to further dehumanization of an already vulnerable population, and will increase the risk of more violent confrontations and abuses by the notoriously gangsterish Aurora Police Department.
I just want to make a statement that if you could please refrain from personal attacks on any council members or the mayor, and just keep your comments to whether you, you know, why you support or don't support the camping ban. Thank you.
William Overton.
One of order. Apologies. One of order, mayor pretend.
Yes, Councilmember Markano.
I'm just going to state for the record that the First Amendment applies to everybody, including the gentleman who attacked me earlier when you said nothing. So I think, you know, maybe we can all suck it up and deal with it. Thank you.
Please. And Mayor, or, or, Councilmember Markano, yes, First Amendment does apply. I was asking politely just to, for people to please refrain from that. I think it's disrespectful. And yeah, it is a First Amendment right, but I think we can be civil. I, you know, I appreciate everyone here, and I think we can be civil.
Good evening, council. I want to thank you for having me here tonight, and I would like to apologize for my dress because I should be dressed better, but I actually have to get to the gym after this. Anyway, I'd like to say, as one of the only people in this room under thirty that's not a radical leftist, I'd like to really say that I, yes, I am. And I'd like to say that I am a right-wing conservative, proud of it, and I am happy to see that this council is supporting a compassionate notion to move people, as was said earlier, off the streets. It is inhumane. It was negative three degrees the other day, and to have people on the streets, it is incompassionate, it is wrong, and it is not safe, and people are dying on these streets. And with regards to that, we cannot allow Aurora to become another San Francisco, Seattle, Portland. It's incomprehensible. And when it comes to funding, I don't, I know the radical leftists in the room don't do their research, but according to KDV, KDVR, we spend in this, in the Denver metro area, we spend double on homelessness than we spend on K through twelve education. That is appalling, and it is sickening, and I cannot believe that we spend double on homelessness than we do on our children, the future. I am a hundred percent in support of this resolution, and I'd like to thank the APD for all that they do in order to keep our community safe. And I also would like to thank you for having me here tonight. That is all.
Yafet Cassasi.
Hello, my name is Yafet. I'm an organizer with PSL. I grew up in Aurora. I went to high school down the street, and I'm here to say that I oppose this camping ban. This camping ban, as well as the sweeps that will accompany it, don't really do anything to address the problem at hand, and that is housing these people. The camping ban, the sweeps are only going to cause more harm, cause more violence, and simply just dehumanize the people that it's affecting. This city has, we could, and rather than having a camping ban, I think it's more important that the council and the city focuses on using its resources to actually provide housing for these people, to actually give them shelter, to actually solve the problem rather than just sweeping it and making it illegal to become homeless. I mean, that's all I have. Vote no.
Jen Beverley.
My name's Jen. I'm an organizer with PSL. Mayor Mike said being homeless was a choice after being undercover and mocking the unhoused community. I have lived in Aurora for most of my adult life and have seen raises in rents, increasing taxes, and killings of unarmed black and brown babies. And I still have seen the lack of support and ends meet for people who can't pay their bills, can't put food in their babies' mouths, who can't pay their Excel bills, who can't pay their Aurora water bills. The unhoused community is not a new thing in Aurora. I went to school at Eagle Crest High School. We had unhoused people out there in your east Aurora area that you take so much pride in. But now, all of a sudden, Aurora has become a major hub for corporations like Amazon and HelloFresh, and we need to make it pretty and shiny because we need to appeal to all those people that want to bring money in and ultimately vote no to unions and say, "No, we don't want to give you money. No, we don't want to give you equal rights. No, we don't want to give you raises for killing, for killing our babies and doing all the things that are right for us." The camping ban is not a solution. This is police terror for anyone it touches. Aurora Police is a gang. We know this. I've been in Aurora my entire life. I've been told by Aurora Police that I get stalked because I look suspicious at sixteen years old on I live in chambers, minding my business. So I know what it's like to be terrorized by APD. This will only affect the marginalized communities, i.e. black and brown kids, black and brown moms and dads, black and brown people who pay the taxes in this community, who put you on these benches. This will only affect the people on the streets. This will affect a cycle. This will be a cycle of incarceration that most people cannot get out of. We know this will be a perpetual cycle for those black people that y'all are arresting in the streets. And lastly, I want to touch on a comment that was made by Francois Bergman about public comments and about the fact that you want to cut down the time of public comment. You made a comment about Elijah McClain and the amount of people who came in here talking about it. That was an interest of the public. Elijah McClain was the interest of the public. And if the people in Aurora want to come in week after week to talk about someone who could have been my brother, could have been my cousin, could have been my dad, and want to come in and complain and say that APD killed someone that looked like me, it is up to you to sit up here and listen to those people because they're the ones that put you up here. So your comment was ignorant, your comment was not necessary, and your comment was very offensive, and you owe the city of Aurora, someone like me, an apology. And the least you can do is sit up there and listen to comments week after week because we won't stop fighting, and we'll keep fighting because of comments like that.
If, if we're going to have disruption, we're going to have to take a recess, and then I'll tell you that then we're going to have to have everyone not participating in this meeting. So I think if you want your voices heard, please be respectful.
Rory Cavallari.
I'll make this short and sweet for y'all. By passing this measure, you are removing people who have nowhere to go, nowhere safe. Being homeless should not be illegal. Maybe if this country gave a fraction of an inch of care about their homeless population and provided for them, their rich, classist neighbors wouldn't have something to get so unfairly bent out of shape about. You have no, these people are still people, and you have no right to remove them from the only refuge they have. If you really cared about the citizens of Aurora, you wouldn't send hundreds of your residents to certain death. You aren't concerned with safety or the environment. Your police force has made that more than clear.
Cindy Fisk.
It's Sydney, by the way. But honestly, I'm baffled by the gall of you council members who are trying to implement a measure that is nothing but cruel and classist, because we know it doesn't solve anything. We can see that from our neighbors in Denver. You refuse to seriously actually invest in affordable housing, in reining in your murderous police force who are paid systematically to rob people of any shot at wealth they have via penalties and incarceration. You are crying about a problem that you have created and that you continue to contribute These are people right in front of you who have had enough privilege to run for office, to finance their own lives as a whole campaign cycle came and went, and they are trying to functionally make homelessness and poverty illegal. They may claim to understand the plights of the folks who endure cruellest winters and asphalt summers with no housing, no consistent food source, no running water or power, no place to put their belongings, but they don't. What they do understand is the cries of APD to please let me harass more marginalized folks, please let these special interest groups make more money with more incarcerations I get, because eventually, these fines are going to pile up for these people, right? And they're not going to be able to pay. Where are they going to go? You also listen to the cries of your rich neighbors who are more concerned with the aesthetics of their sidewalk and that their neighborhood doesn't look too nice anymore than you are with the people who are literally being forced to live in a tent. I don't know, I feel like living in a tent is a lot worse than looking at a tent. In fact, I enjoy going to REI, but I wouldn't really want to be homeless. Anyways, let's talk about the exemptions that are in this ban that make it compassionate, which is you, you'll put them in a shelter, right, unless they're an addict, or unless they're gay, or unless they're trans, right? Or you'll only come sweep their neighborhoods every few weeks, give them a, you know, a little bit of time to get their belongings back together before you destroy them all again. We are not fooled by the language of compassion, and I will give the GOP credit for trying to make this look compassionate. They have new messaging every day, I swear to God, but it's not. And why would you force these people to have interactions with the police, very stressful interactions, that call their very existence into question when they are already stressed and struggling to find a place to lay their heads, to find food to eat, to find a job, to find their families? Why add more stress? Do you think that's going to lift them out of poverty, or do you think that's going to trap them in the perpetual cycle, which is what you are intending to do, right? We're not fooled by your statements about safety and environment, because if you were, APD wouldn't, there would be nobody employed with that department, right, if you were concerned about safety? But we know what you're concerned about. You're concerned about trapping us in a system where we can never escape into generational and perpetual poverty. Moreover, you want...
I'm sorry, you're reaching your three minutes.
Of course. Moreover, the most important part here is the only thing that separates you and the people you want to sweep from the streets is money. You are afraid that if we had the ability to organize and run for office...
Ma'am, your time is up, ma'am. Your time is up, ma'am.
Until they do.
Rich Forne.
My name is Rich Forne. I'm a social worker, and last year, I worked at the Safe Outdoor Space at Fourteenth and Grant for homeless women and trans individuals. One of the things that I learned there, and I don't claim to be an expert on the unhoused community, it was only a four-month period, but I learned quite a bit, and one of the most important things that I learned was with the camping ban and with the sweeps, it became much harder to find individuals who were needing to get services. You know how hard it is to find a bed for somebody? You know how hard it is to find addiction treatment for somebody? You know how fickle it is? How fickle it is as a moment of an addict when they're actually willing to go and get services, and you want to make it harder for these people to do that? The levels of sexual assault in this community, and you want to re-traumatize them by ripping them away from the only place they know in that moment, and then you're going to put them into a shelter and try to give them services in that moment? No, that's not how trauma works. This is not trauma-informed. This is not kind. This is not compassionate. I'd like to quote Matthew 25:40 for you all. Don't have it memorized. Stopped going to church a long time ago, but I do remember this one. "And the king will say, 'I tell you the truth. When you did it to the least of these, my brothers and sisters, you were doing it to me.'" This is an act of cruelty, and you are doing it to the most vulnerable and most marginalized people out there, and may God have mercy on your souls if you pass this.
Nathalie Ingber.
Hi, my name's Natalia. I came here today in opposition of this abatement ordinance for unauthorized public camping. Now, I want you to know that opposing this ban doesn't mean that anyone hopes that living in tents be a permanent solution for our unhoused neighbors, but displacing, arresting, and fining Aurora residents is the most regressive approach you could possibly take. It relies on the expansion of policing, neglects the basic needs of our neighbors, and will only aggravate the situation. Folks that are camping in the street are not there by lifestyle choice, as you've declared, Mayor. It is obvious they are there because Aurora has failed them. So instead of pouring salt on a wound created by Aurora's neglect for its residents, please do the right thing by not allowing police and the city to further criminalize and alienate those that have been backed into a corner. And just like any other instance where police or the judiciary system is involved, black and brown community members will certainly be disproportionately affected. Please look to Denver as an example of how ineffective camp sweeps are. An absurd amount of money is dumped into trashing Denver residents' property and shelter, leaving people no choice but to set up camps someplace else that will only undergo sweeps again. The fact that so many resources are continuously dumped to no real solution or end is infuriating. Surely, there is a better use of these resources. The Aurora Police Department has no business spending more money, and we will not tolerate the expansion of APD under the guise of cleaning up our streets. Please vote no on this blatantly anti-homeless camping ban, and refocus your efforts on creating sustainable solutions for your residents, houseless or otherwise. Thank you.
Alexis Moncada.
Hi, my name is Alexis Moncada, and I'm with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. We are here today to directly oppose this plan to subject those already incredibly vulnerable to even more brutalization. Being houseless is not a lifestyle choice. It is a systematic failure. Instead of using our resources to provide people with housing, the city wants to push out those who have already been pushed out of their homes and communities. This is not a solution to homelessness. Aurora already conducts homeless sweeps, and we can see that this is not an effective nor humane way to address this. There are costly, and they have done nothing to reduce the crisis of poverty in Aurora. I have witnessed some of these sweeps myself, and they are incredibly cruel. This proposal wants to increase police presence in so-called key communities. Like what was said earlier, APD has a history of racist policing. After all the abuse and corruption we have witnessed at the hands of the APD, how can we expect them to engage peacefully with members of our community? APD is constantly under investigation for brutalizing or murdering people in the city. They already receive over $130 million in funding. The community came together in the summer of 2020 to demand action against APD, and it is an insult to the entire city that we are now seeing these kind of proposals come forward. The fact that we are even having this discussion when there are so many other problems really affecting people, like access to affordable housing and violence at the hands of APD, is ridiculous. This is an injustice against all citizens of Aurora, and we cannot continue to treat the failures of this city with more policing. All of you will go home tonight to a warm bed and food on your table. Many other people in this community will not. The only acceptable solution is to use the city's funds to provide people with stable, secure housing that they have a right to. Please vote no on this ordinance.
Good evening, council members, mayor. My name is Eliza Lucero, and I'm an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. We are here tonight to voice the community's opposition and condemnation of the homeless camping ban that has been proposed by Mayor Kaufman. It is well-known that this proposal followed Mayor Kaufman's truly... It is well-known that this proposal followed Mayor Kaufman's truly disgusting stunt of going undercover to be, quote, "immersed in homelessness" for a week, as if Mike Kaufman, with his $174,000 salary and, you know, home that he returned to, could ever actually understand the circumstances of one suffering from homelessness and poverty. Mike Kaufman made approximately $3,347 during this week-long act that was so overtly disrespectful to the people of Aurora, yet he felt that he could determine that his little performance proved that the reason people are homeless is a result of their lifestyle choice. The real reason Mayor Kaufman did this is clear. His actions were never about an investigation on the causes of homelessness, it was never an attempt to relate to his most vulnerable constituents, and it was absolutely not about developing solutions to the crisis of homelessness. Mayor Kaufman's actions were rather an insulting public relations stunt to put forward his right-wing agenda against the poor and to create an excuse to increase policing in Aurora, as opposed to funding actual solutions to this problem. Criminalizing encampments does absolutely nothing to address the homelessness issue here. All this does is increase police presence in our communities directly after the people of Aurora have so vehemently spoken out against the brutal and thug-like police department that is APD. This proposal seeks to give even more money than the already exorbitant $130 million taxpayer dollars allocated to dangerous murderous criminals that make up the Aurora Police Department. This proposal only funds a cycle of cruel and violent displacement. This is the opposite of a solution, and we are here to demand real solutions, because there is a problem, we want a real solution. So what is the solution to not having a house? It is blatantly clear: fund permanent housing. With homes being provided, Aurora can be directly meeting people's needs instead of funding increased violence at the hands of the police. Do not give any more money to these police officers, fund real solutions, and reject the criminalization of poverty in Aurora. Thank you.
Lillian House.
Good evening, council. My name is Lillian House, I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I'm here with a whole lot of people from the community who took their time tonight, so instead of thanking you all for your time, I want to thank you all for your time, because we are not getting paid, so thank you. That is a real civic duty, and I want to really uplift what people have been saying. This is not even an attempt at a solution, it is so plainly not even an attempt at a solution, it is a performance for your right-wing base, and the people of Aurora deserve better than a performance. All we need to do is look at Denver and see what a failure this is. This is not an issue that needs expert investigation, which you haven't even looked into, you haven't even done that, this is just a performance, it is so superficial and transparent. It is an insult to the people of Aurora to propose investing more money into the Aurora Police Department when they are under a consent decree, which people did not vote for, they didn't get to vote, for $4.5 million to be contracted to supervise them for five years because of their patterns and practices of racism and abuse and criminality, nobody voted for that, nobody had a say in that. Likewise, nobody had a say in the murder of Elijah McLean, which has been a traumatic stain on this community, and also was just paid out $15 million of taxpayer money, we pay for them, we pay for their mistakes, they brutalize us, we pay, in every way. That's not the only settlement you all have paid out. You've paid out, let's see, $100,000 recently to a woman who APD officers hogtied and carried out of her home on a child welfare check? That is how these officers handle child welfare checks? You paid out $285,000 of our money?
Ma'am, you need to stay on the camping ban?
Oh no, this is related, thank you, ma'am. And so to a man who APD officers brutalized while responding to a noise complaint, so now you want to send these same officers into the most furthest marginalized communities? Our neighbors, they are our neighbors, maybe not your neighbors, you probably live in a fenced gated community? No, what's your address? On top of the settlements, you guys paid $6 million in retention bonuses, the community does not want to retain them. In fact, if you want to talk about a gang disruption program, let's disband APD. By no means is sending this department into our communities a solution to any problem facing this community, and there are real problems, and you know that, because you, dressed up not just as a homeless person, but as a homeless veteran, which belies the very fact that this is a choice, because the fact...
I'm sorry, you're reaching your three minutes.
...a disproportionate number of veterans shows that people go and they face the trauma of being sent to fight a war...
Time, please.
...and come home to no support.
Time, please.
That is the cause of homelessness. Do not support this, and if you do support this...
Time, please.
Resistance...
Time!
...it doesn't end here.
Okay, we're gonna...
Resistance doesn't end here.
We're gonna end up having to take a recess. We are gonna take a recess, and no one else is gonna be able to talk. So if you can, please be respectful.
Samuel Hoglin.
One more, one more, and we take a recess.
You make a great school teacher.
Hello, I'm Sam PSL. I oppose the proposed camping ban and the campaign to substitute policing for real solutions. Sweeps are not a solution. Sweeps are costly, ineffective, and inhumane, and they only create cycles of misery. I've seen what happens firsthand in Denver, you know, people, fences go up in the morning, and just people's stuff just gets thrown away. You know, you're not born homeless, it happens overnight. People have jobs, people are in apartments, you know, they can't afford their rent, they miss one payment and they're out, they pack up everything they can into a tent, and they think that I'm gonna be able to work my way out of this, like, I'll get back up on my feet. But they still have a job, so they go to their job, the fences go up, everything in their, everything in their tent gets taken out, gets thrown away, they'll lose computers, passports, so it just makes it that much harder. And like, the longer you're out there on the street and you just face these injustices, you begin to slowly lose your mind, and that's what happens to a lot of people. And when it gets to that point, it's actually, it's too late. Denver's just been horrible on this. Please, Aurora, do not follow the same road that Denver's followed. It's kicking the can down the road. A lot of these, you know, a lot of these encampments, the amount of money they spend on these encampments actually could pay for, you know, a month's rent for everyone in the encampment, you know, enough time to maybe get up on your feet. So that's what I have to say, please vote no.
Bruno.
Hi again. By the way, I don't know if I mentioned this before, but I am an Aurora resident, I'm an Aurora resident in Ward 2, I've been an Aurora resident for 10 years. And as an Aurora resident, I'd like to remind everyone on this council that you are public servants in a position of power. You are not the people that get to decide the fate of everyone in your town, you are supposed to be serving the people that put you in those positions of power and the people that can remove you from those positions of power. And what you're doing right now is evading that job that you have, because you are literally looking for the laziest, most brutal shortcut you could find to the issue of homelessness. Do your job, be a public servant, actually sacrifice something out there for your constituents, maybe sacrifice some time, maybe sacrifice some money, maybe sacrifice doing hard work to solve these issues. If you have constituents that are so bothered by the injustice, the cruelty of having to see people just struggling to survive, that cannot bear to see people just trying to get by in their lovely, pristine Aurora sidewalks, then you know what? Get them into housing, it's that simple, it's that simple, get them into housing, put the money into that, put the effort into that. I actually find it really interesting that you think that the issue of policing has nothing to do with this, because who is gonna be out there enforcing these camping, these sweeps? Who's gonna be out there performing these sweeps? It's gonna be the APD, the same APD that is, have been found categorically to have an issue with racism and excessive force. This is not a far-left fringe radical opinion that I hold, this was research done by the Attorney General of the State of Colorado. You disagree with that? Take it up with him, focus on that, focus on making your cops less racist, focus on giving resources to the people that are most in need in your city, focus on bringing real solutions to your constituents, and not just sweeping your problems under the rug and calling it a day. And if this camping ban goes through, the resistance will not be limited to these meetings, we will continue to be out here, we will continue to shed light on this, because these crimes will not go unnoticed by the community. The community does not stand with this, we do not want to see our neighbors just herded around like cattle, and we will be out there, we will be putting a spotlight on your actions and APD's actions, and we will be making sure that there is public outcry about this. Thank you.
Omen Cross.
Ladies and gentlemen, council, Mr. Mayor, my name is Omen Cross, I am currently unaffiliated, unemployed, and homeless in Aurora right now. So, let's do this speech right here, I call it the Three Minute Mirror. Thank you all for allowing me to speak, but I have a difficult task before me, I have three minutes to open the eyes of a whole room, but let's see if I can do this as just one homeless veteran. To be honest, I don't even know why this is being discussed. Has the city of Aurora fallen so far as to pass a law to label people as trash and sweep them away? Is this moment real? If so, who have we all become? I only have three minutes, I don't have time to explain to you why this isn't just a bad law, it is immoral. So, instead, I'm just gonna present you with the only three outcomes that can happen to me, depending on how this goes. Option A, tonight, every single one of you is gonna go home, and you're gonna take a real hard look in the mirror, and you're gonna see just how monstrous actions like this make each and every one of you. And then when you realize that, you're gonna say no more, not just to this bill, but all inhumane bills just like this. You'll stand for something that matters and earn the position you were given. Option B, you're gonna ignore me, and you're gonna send the APD, and they're gonna sweep me away, and millions more like me, all over this country, because you are setting an example as to whether or not this kind of behavior is okay. So if you sweep me away, I'm gonna die alone with nothing, or you're gonna have your friends lock me up in jail. Is that what I deserve? So let's go on to option C. Now this here is the fun one. In this scenario, you still don't listen, you pass it anyway, but these people, the ones who care, they're gonna save me from your broom, they're not gonna let you kill me, and when they do that, I'm gonna live long enough to handle one piece of business. Because if this council has become so corrupt that you can't see the poison that's in your own heart right now, Mr. Mayor, I officially challenge you for the title of Mayor of the City of Aurora. Because if you will not stand for these people, I will.
We are in recess, we are in recess, officers, we are in recess.
... five five prohibits any form of cover, protection, or shelter from the elements other than clothing. You go out in the three degree below we- weather and see what you do. The section sounds like cruel unusual punishment. Section one fourteen, one oh six, definitions include camp or camping includes the use of a vehicle for overnight occupancy where overnight occupancy or overnight camping is not permitted. How are people supposed to know where these locations are unless they're posted? Councilmember Marcona's amendment is much more humane and in favor of that a gender item and hope that at least six of you have some empathy for people less fortunate to you and will vote no on this item and yes on his amendment. In this day and age, the vast majority of Auroraans face the possibility of becoming unhoused due to a number of things they have no control over. We also know the city does not have sufficient shelter options available to, at all times, for all the individuals and families that are being called unauthorized camps. Who decides our priority of shelter options where human beings will be moved to? Who decides what alternative facilities are? Who is going to decide which group or groups of unhoused human beings will be moved first? There is also no indication that families will not be separated. It imperative that these issues be codified. I also object to the resolution taking place immediately without reconsideration. The city manager needs some time to do research for the task you are posing upon him.
Your three minutes are up.
Because you want to take the time to research themselves. Thank you.
Ren is next. You have three minutes.
Good evening, councilors. I have spent the past two years studying encampment sweeps and other policies criminalizing homelessness, including camping bans via surveys, records requests, legal analysis, dedicated auditing, and firsthand observation, primarily in Denver, which has an urban camping ban approaching its tenth anniversary in May, so I thought I'd share with you tonight some of the data available as impact there. Amputations due to frostbite among homeless people in Denver increased by three hundred percent after the passing of the urban camping ban. A survey of over five hundred homeless residents six months later found that sixty-six percent of those displaced by it moved to hidden, more dangerous areas. For such people, rates of robbery, sexual assault, drug overdose, and death by exposure are significantly elevated. In Denver, the number of reported crimes against homeless victims increased by forty-two percent in the five years following the camping ban. Eighty-three percent of those same survey respondents were abated or displaced without being connected with any services. Fifty percent of them said their quality of life went down significantly due to sleep loss associated with camping ban enforcement. The effects of chronic sleep deprivation include depressed immune systems, increased risk of stress-related illnesses, confusion and disorientation, or even at high levels, memory loss, and psychosis. All that's just a small sample of the many public health risks created by urban camping bans, if you won't take my word for it. In 2020, the CDC issued national guidelines from municipalities against abating encampments because it significantly accelerated the spread of COVID-19. But the damage isn't just medical, it is also economic. From another survey conducted in 2020, seventy-two point six percent of respondents had lost property when being displaced, and twenty-nine percent had lost everything they owned. Case workers and service providers routinely report disconnection from clients due to camping ban displacement, leading to decreased numbers of homeless residents accessing services. And when ticketed or arrested, homeless residents lose future housing and employment opportunities as a result. Camping bans are also legally dubious. In 2019, Denver was ruled unconstitutional in the Tenth Circuit as cruel and unusual punishment. In the Ninth Circuit, Boise has been as well. They're upheld all the way to the Supreme Court level, which refused to hear the city's appeal. Passing a camping ban is guaranteeing Aurora will be subject to years of federal litigation at taxpayer expense. I don't necessarily expect the conservatives among you to care about any of that. I am saying it here tonight so that there can be no doubt that you have all the necessary information available to you to prevent making the same brutal, costly mistake that Denver and too many other cities have. This is the speech I would give to an idiot to try and teach him why this is evil, because it's obvious those of you who have a soul will vote against this measure.
Axel is next. Go ahead, you have three minutes. Axel, you are live, you have three minutes.
Um, did you say Maxwell or Maxim?
Maxim, go ahead.
I apologize, this is Maxim. Thank you, councilmembers, for allowing me, a longtime resident of Aurora, a twenty-four year veteran and immigrant and a taxpayer, the opportunity to speak on this matter. I do not represent a political party, but I do represent many real residents that were not able to come to the meeting today because of the hostile nature of the folks that live there today. I do appreciate APD for being there to protect those that were. That said, homesick encampments are an increasing problem across Aurora, and a camping abatement is a significant step in the right direction to manage the health and cleanliness for communities. These encampments lack the proper sanitation, plumbing, services, and especially provide the perfect breeding grounds for diseases, including spreading COVID-19, hepatitis A and B, E. coli, and HIV, among many other diseases. Aside from the visible trash, which is not the score of my argument, homesick encampments also prevent, uh, excuse me, present a biohazard. These hazards include human waste, animal waste, drug paraphernalia, and not only in the human waste, uh, excuse me, and not only is the human waste an open-air drug use health risk for those who live in these areas, it is also harmful to the residents who are left with the burden to have to clean up the waste that those leave behind. The camping abatement is a necessary first step to manage this issue, the so-called camping areas on our public and private properties, and I encourage every city council member to approve the camping abatement, as I think all of us can agree that supporting public health and sanitation is the primary function of city council. I appreciate everything that our police do, I appreciate everything that our council members do, and I implore you to please, please vote for this as the first step as we move away from these camping encampments. Thank you for your time.
Lori, you are next, you have three minutes, so ahead.
Uh, good evening. I'd really like to thank the city of Aurora for their continued commitment to support and establish services that support people who are experiencing homelessness, including shelter beds and affordable housing units. Nonprofit organizations like Aurora Warms the Night should be applauded and supported for their work to provide food and hi, uh, provide food, clothing, and other necessities for people living unsheltered. Donating time and money to those organizations is both helpful to people experiencing homelessness and it helps keep the city clean and safe. These support services show a great amount of respect and care for people who are homeless. It shows our humanity and our desire to serve the community. The camping abatement is a first step to reducing the overwhelming rise in hazardous living conditions for our fellow human beings. Human waste, drug paraphernalia, crime, and sexual assault accompany these camps, and they're harmful to the people living in them. I've talked to many residents and business owners in Aurora too, and they've shared that due to the encampments, their children fear playing at the park or just simply walking down the street. People now avoid going outside because they fear for their safety. Families avoid patronizing local businesses because the areas are presumed dangerous. These local businesses are no longer able to make ends meet when their customers stop coming. And anyone who says that the only people that are affected are the homeless is wrong. It affects our entire community, people of all races and ethnicities. I hope all of our council members will be compassionate to all. City council must consider the safety of all of the residents, and that means approving this first step with the camping abatement. I don't understand why so many people tonight said that this was an attempt to criminalize homelessness, so that they'll be police sweeps, because the camping abatement requires that the city provide a minimum of seventy-two hours' notice before the camping area can abate it, and that the city must ensure that the people living in the encampment have an alternative shelter option. Further, it does not criminalize homelessness, as there are no fines or penalties associated with being in an encampment. I'm also grateful for the companion proposal offered by Mayor Kaufman to require the city to increase our shelter capacity to meet the increased demand. These are real solutions. So, yes, shelter for our vulnerable people experiencing homelessness, and yes, for respecting our entire community and ensuring public safety and health. Please take care of the entire community and vote yes for the camping abatement. It is the compassionate approach to dignity and safety for all of Aurora. Thank you.
Eve is next, go ahead, you have three minutes. Eve, go ahead, you have three minutes.
I am an employee of a female council member that owns a business that supports the racist APA police union who blasted Elijah McClain, but turned around and hired the same law firm that represented Elijah McClain's mother to defend her First Amendment rights after she stuck her foot in her mouth and showed her lack of intelligence. Aurora citizens need to know who she really is when the camera is off, and she is no longer a keyboard warrior. She wants the camping ban but won't pay a living wage to her staff and won't pay overtime when it's owed. She forces us to dress like sex workers on Colfax, and as a female business owner, wouldn't you want to dignify your female staff? You consistently put your bartenders at risk of civil suits just for promotion of over-serving for the sole purpose of profits, and you have no concern for the safety of your patrons or any other driver or passenger on the road. You state what happens when they lie your issue, but it is. I strongly encourage you to stop this practice. I encourage you to stop drinking and driving. I encourage you to stop giving cops free booze, free food, to get out of the inevitable du疑.
How do we, if it's not regarding the camping ban, is there a way to stop the call?
You can, you can, you can instruct-
This is regarding this item, which is the camping ban?
Yes, if council would like, they can instruct Roger Sherman to let them know to stay on the-
Okay, so he is screening calls, though, that make sure that people are calling in on the camping ban?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Michael is next, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you, my name is Michael Ruddock, Policy Manager with Healthier Colorado. As an organization to advocate for public policy that improves the health of Coloradans, and on behalf of our seventy-five hundred members in Aurora, we strongly oppose the ordinance tonight. At best, this ordinance is an attempt to shuffle people experiencing homelessness out of the public eye. At worst, it's a ill-conceived and costly policy that will negatively affect attempts to permanently house people and improve health. Criminalization of homelessness isn't an effective strategy of reducing homelessness. Make no mistake, this is a policy that will result in more fines and more jailing of unhoused people. Homelessness in this community, community, and all communities is a terrible reality compared to housed people. Individuals experiencing homelessness have a life expectancy eighteen years fewer, higher rates of diabetes, heart attacks, HIV, depression, and undiagnosed mental disorders. Children experiencing homelessness experience emotional and behavioral issues at twice the rate of kids with home. That's why it's so necessary to prioritize real solutions and resources to get people on their feet and under a roof. This ordinance distracts from that goal. According to the 2021 PIT count, there were five hundred and ninety-four people experiencing homelessness on a given night in Aurora. Meanwhile, there are only two hundred and eighty-five year-round consistent shelter beds. Language in the ordinance states that a camp cannot be swept unless there is adequate shelter offered. Okay, that's great, but when we have double the amount of people experiencing homelessness as we have shelter beds, why aren't we focusing our attention on making up that huge gap in shelter? This is the definition of missing the forest for the trees. Frustratingly, this ordinance is codifying strategies that haven't worked while increasing the frequency of sweeps and abatement. According to the city's own website, the city already gives seventy-two hour notice before sweeps, offers shelter options, and then sweeps camps. Surely, we can all acknowledge that this strategy, in lieu of real investment in housing and shelters, hasn't worked, as the number of people experiencing homelessness has increased over the last two years by almost twenty percent. By the way, that's just about the same increase as in Denver, where they've had a camping ban implemented since 2013. If the strategy hasn't worked up until now, why would it work by formalizing it into an ordinance? Housing-first solutions are what work. Building trust between service providers and people experiencing homelessness is what works. Investing in job training, mental and physical health, affordable housing is what works. During a hundred-day stretch last fall, Denver housed five hundred and seventy-six people through this approach. That's twenty less than the entire homeless population of Aurora. These aren't pie-in-the-sky talking points, it's data-driven solutions to getting your office straight-
Your three minutes are up.
No. Please vote no. Thank you.
Next is Barbara, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you for hearing me tonight, I'm Barbara Niederhoff, oh, hi, I'm Barbara Niederhoff, speaking on my own behalf, thank you for hearing me. I've lived in Aurora since 2009, and before that, I lived fifty years right across the street from Aurora. We all want our neighborhoods safe and clean, and we want our neighbors to be safe, healthy, and contributing to our city. We know that in order to even do just okay in our society, everyone needs a base of operations, a place to rest after days' work, a place to be safe, arrange affairs, and be ready for the next day. All other social functioning rests on that base. We know that year by year, that is kept out of reach for more and more Auroraans. Pay is not keeping up with housing costs, and affordable housing is not keeping up with the people who need it. My two older kids, who have finished college, both got full-time jobs after graduating. Neither of them can afford Aurora, and one has moved away. They're both very lucky that my husband and I were able to buy when they were young, and the market worked for more people. Some other people have been squeezed out, can't afford a roof, and can't afford to move away either. Until Aurora builds the spaces needed to keep them safe and under roof, we'll just be copying Denver's failed policies of pushing people from one neighborhood to another, to another. That will make it harder for people to get a cheap job, harder for them to get care of services, harder to keep belongings they need to survive, and make it much harder for them to gain their own housing later on. In addition, this policy will spread their sights around rather than make them just go away, and that will make Aurora less safe and less clean for all of us, and it will waste a lot of taxpayer money. Each of you has your own stable base of operations. Even if you chose to live outside for a few days or more, you would not be experiencing homelessness, because you always know that this space is there for you. To any council members who believe that government should be based on evidence, please vote no on this ordinance, listen to experts in the field, and put our resources into real solutions so that we can get people on their feet again and make Aurora affordable. Thank you and goodbye.
You, next is Aubrey, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Evening, my name is Aubrey Wild, and I'm the Advocacy Program Director at the Colorado Coalition for the Homeless. We provide integrated healthcare, supportive services, and house four thousand households through developments we own and operate, including Renaissance Veteran Departments at Fitzsimmons located here in Aurora. I'm speaking on behalf of the Coalition in firm opposition to the proposed camping ban. Strong families and thriving communities start with home. This ordinance and companion resolution fail to direct any resources toward the development of affordable, supportive housing, emergency shelter, or other meaningful solutions to homelessness, and we know that there is not enough shelter available for the people you hope to sweep. Criminalization of survival further destabilizes the lives of people experiencing homelessness, leading to an increase in robbery, physical violence, sexual assault of people experiencing homelessness. It leads to an increased risk of frostbite, hypothermia, dehydration, heat stroke, disease spread, and death, and it leads to an increase in disconnection from case managers, housing navigators, housing providers, and medical providers. Streets have forced people to seek more hidden and isolated locations to rest and have made it much harder for the Coalition staff to do their job. It's also made it more dangerous to engage with folks, because people who are previously sheltered in groups of five, six, and seven have been, and have been swept under camping bans are more likely to settle in what we're calling mega camps of up to a hundred people in areas that are unfamiliar to our frontline staff as a defense. Without access to housing and services, many people experiencing homelessness become trapped in a homelessness jail cycle. Criminalization prevents people from getting on a path to stability, and it comes at a major cost to taxpayers. One of the most impactful strategies for addressing homelessness is permanent supportive housing, or PSH, which pairs housing with voluntary supportive services to make sure that people can remain housed successfully. Through Denver's Social Impact Bond Project, for example, more than three hundred and sixty of the most frequent visitors to emergency rooms, jails, and detox were housed using the Housing First and PSH models over the last five years. And in total, it cost half as much to provide housing and supportive services than it did to provide emergency services and policing to people experiencing homelessness. Evaluators found several things, including that eighty-six percent of residents remained housed after one year, there was a thirty-four percent reduction in police contacts, there was a sixty-five percent reduction in use of detox, a forty percent decrease in emergency department visits, and a hundred and fifty-five percent increase in preventative office-based healthcare visits. This clearly demonstrates that solving homelessness is possible, and that shifting resources away from policing and emergency services towards proven strategies improves outcomes for people experiencing homelessness and the broader community. I challenge you to identify even one place where a camping ban will work. I don't think you'll be able to do that, I urge a no vote tonight.
Brian is next, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Brian Lindstrom, I'm a lifelong Auroraan, and I'm a resident of Ward Two. I'm speaking against fourteen A and the criminalization of poverty. So, I'm a history teacher, and I have a master's degree in history. I was originally gonna plan to discuss how history repeats itself and draw comparisons between vacancy laws and peonage policies of the past and homeless policies attempted to be passed in the present day, but I've learned from my more conservative family members that appealing to history and humanity is not persuasive enough, but instead, it comes down to money. So I'm here to appeal to your fiscal conservatism. I've heard the majority of this council count being good stewards of the taxpayer dollar and being fiscally responsible, but this is big government spending and overreach, plain and simple. Enforcing this ban will increase government spending while doing nothing to actually stall homelessness. It will cost taxpayers over forty thousand per homeless person to approach homelessness in this way. We've seen Denver do this for over, for almost a decade, and has increased costs in there at least fifty thousand per homeless person while not addressing homelessness. If we invested that money into housing, the homeless, it would cost taxpayers half, half as much while actually solving the problem, stop this big government spending, stop this big government overreach, do not pass fourteen A. And as an aside, I keep hearing calls for respect. You know, when we host vigils, you complain, when we march, you complain. This public comment is the only vehicle for us to peacefully be heard by you, and you threaten to shut it down because our comments hurt your feelings. Remember JFK's words, "Those who make peaceful revolution impossible will make violent revolution inevitable." Thank you.
Omar is next, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you to our city council and mayor. Name is Omar Montgomery, I am a resident in Ward Five, and I am speaking as a resident, not for a particular organization or political party. I am speaking on behalf against the camping ban, because I think it will cause unnecessary financial stress on the city, and will not address the issues of our unhoused. Some of you were with me and several others at the MLK statue this year celebrating Martin Luther King birthday. He said over two thousand people. One of the young ladies, I sometimes walk down Colfax, came to me with a big smile and gave me a hug, and Councilmember Crystal Marillo was there, and said, "Because I have housing, I am sober, I am no longer doing drugs or alcohol, and me and my child have a place to stay." We could be a city that do this right and be innovative. We could send action teams similar to how the Havana Business District does and go check on those unhoused, find out what services they need, and place them either at the Living Tree, ready-to-work programs that we have there. The only permanent housing that we have for the unhoused is Providence at the Heights. If we're able to expand some of these programs that we have right here in the city and become an innovative city and show the rest of the world, the rest of the country, how to do this right, if we have action teams go out, maybe begin to be case management, and give these people the services they need and do this with humanity, we would be a model and not using the same type of programs that have failed. I realize this is a very difficult decision. I know that our small business community deserves to be able to have people come, patronize their business, and not have distractions, but at the same time, we could do this with humanity. With that task force, let's have our small business community there. Let's have our advocates for the unhoused. Let's have our unhoused community to speak for themselves and not us speaking for them. Let's get that action team going, and let's begin to use models that would treat our unhoused with humanity and give them grace, so that they can live their lives not in a coma, but in a home where they probably won't be doing drugs, where they won't be committing crimes or anything of this nature. And let's not stereotype our unhoused. Many of them are working poor. Their average rent is about thirteen hundred dollars a month. Some of them are sleeping in cars at Restoration Church waiting on home vouchers that they haven't received yet. They got their kids in the car and they go eat at the church. The city was there, as a matter of fact-
Your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Mandy is next, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you Mayor Kaufman and members of council. My name is Mandy Ashley, I'm a resident of Aurora in Ward Five. I'm the Executive Director of the Aurora Health Alliance, which is an inclusive convenor comprised of many sectors and stakeholders. Our mission is to achieve equitable access and promote a healthier Aurora for everyone. This includes members of the community who are unhoused. My comments represent both mine and those of the alliance. Aurora Health Alliance's commitment to health equity means we strive for and promote the highest possible standard of health for all people. Health equity means everyone has a fair opportunity to be as healthy as possible. It requires the dismantling of structural racism through the removal areas of health. It requires both improving access to the care and resources needed to thrive, along with equitable treatment once that access is gained. We've not seen any compelling evidence that enacting or enforcing urban camping bans provide any meaningful solutions to solving the housing crisis. For this reason, we urge you to vote no on the camping ban ordinance. Given the lack of appropriate emergency shelter, the lack of health, mental health, and substance treatment services for those experiencing homelessness, and the lack of adequate long-term supportive housing and affordable housing for those in need, the proposed camping ban would essentially criminalize the status of being unhoused in Aurora. We urge investments in housing, services, and shelter as a cost-effective, proven alternative to criminalization. The city is currently undergoing strategic planning process with regard to housing. Implementing a camping ban seems counterintuitive to the thoughtful database solutions that will be produced through the city's own process. Have some faith in this process and patience with its implementation. Criminalization is not an effective tool to address homelessness. Data-driven solutions centered around portable housing, emergency shelter, wraparound services, physical, mental, and behavioral health services are key to reducing homelessness and improving the health and quality of life for Auroraans. We urge you to vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Next is Mandy, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mandy Corvari, I'm a resident of Ward Four. I would like to voice strong opposition to the camping ban. It's cruel to prosecute and persecute unsheltered people without providing a place for them to go. I find it shameful that our city council was recently pushed far right by a huge infusion of the cash and not by the will of the people of Aurora in order to pass this ban and other inhumane measures. It's very telling that in this session, you are threatening to silence the voice of the people because you don't like what they are saying, but you need to hear this, because people are fighting for their lives tonight. I want to point out that it is empty and asinine to pretend that this is in any way a compassionate practice. Treating camp sites doesn't give people a roof over their heads. It pulls them further into homelessness by taking away their possessions, and it's a logical argument on its face. The camping ban in Denver has not helped homelessness. The cleanups in Denver are brutal events that cause harm to the people whose items are being trashed. No matter what the law states, in reality, individuals end up losing their personal documents and items that keep them warm on cold nights, food, and shelter. They don't usually have a bed to sleep in after the sweep. These losses prevent- These losses prevent people from gaining employment and cost precious funds to replace. This is violence. The only thing that helps the homelessness is housing. I want my tax dollars to go towards more affordable housing and low cost of free housing for those who need it. And I do want to say that Councilmember Markano, you're doing a great job and you represent the opinions of my household. Thank you.
Eric is next. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
The camping ban in Denver has not helped homelessness. It's been Denver a brutal event that caused harm to people.
Derek, you are live. Turn off your radio in three minutes.
.......................................... Aaron, you are next. You have three minutes.
All right. Thank you. My name is Aaron Futrell. I'm a resident of Ward Four and I'm calling in opposition of the camping ban. I appreciate the opportunity to speak and I just would urge the council to practice humanity. I know you guys can practice humanity. I've seen it when you guys came together in a collaborative effort to propose, to reconsider the East Bank development. Mother Teresa once said that many people talk about the homeless, but not many, but few talk to them. So, I'm asking those on council who consider themselves spiritual, and I know there are a few of you, to reconsider your position on criminalizing homelessness. I've seen firsthand how homelessness can affect friends and family, and it's hard on all of them. There's different humane ways that we can provide housing and include wraparound services so their problems are being met while also providing a humane way to treat our unhoused residents. So, again, just to make this quick, I'm just gonna urge humanity, not just for unhoused, but also for your colleagues, and hopefully you can come up with a better collaborative solution rather than criminalizing homelessness. Thank you very much for this time to speak.
That will be focused on the phone line.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna take a five-minute recess and then we'll open it up for discussion with council. Meeting is back in session. Meeting is back in session. I think we're still missing some people. Mayor, you have the floor to introduce the ordinance. Oh, I'm sorry. Katie, could you please read fourteen A?
Item fourteen A is introduction of ordinance twenty-two-twelve, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Aurora, Colorado, adding a new section to be numbered ninety-four-one-twenty-two to the city code pertaining to prohibiting unauthorized camping on public or private property and adding Article Four, Sections one-fourteen, one-oh-six through one-fourteen-one-twelve to Chapter one-fourteen pertaining to abating unauthorized camps on public property.
Thank you. And Mayor, do you want to go ahead and introduce your ordinance?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would move item number fourteen A.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion by Mayor Kaufman and a second by Councilmember Savonik. Discussion?
Mayor Protam.
Yes. Well, go ahead, Councilmember Markano.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a series of amendments I would like to offer to the ordinance.
Mayor, or Councilmember Markano, this is Councilmember Mujo. I was not as quick to you to the draw, but I actually was hoping to make just an opening statement, not an amendment. Would that be okay with you?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Can I run the meeting?
Sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Yes, Councilmember Maria.
Okay, I appreciate it. Okay, so before we get into discussion, I just wanted to open with just acknowledging the intense dissension of prior council meetings. If you've tuned into prior council meetings, it's not a surprise when I say there's been contention and it can get very intense. I do think, though, that this is, you know, too important of a conversation for any potential discussion, so I just, I acknowledge that we are not, there's clear policy difference here with myself and others, and I also want to acknowledge that the mayor, you know, has the votes to pass this, but there are several of us, Councilmember Markano and myself included, that do have amendments to propose. There are some serious structural concerns with how this ordinance is written, and I think the public deserves to hear that out and that debate and that conversation and not get stuck with a procedural call for the vote, which would thwart any discussion henceforward with that call. So, I've seen that procedure kind of used to discourage and literally shut down any public, you know, discussion between council members on the agenda items, so I just wanted to ask the council, or sorry, the mayor and my fellow council members to see if you guys would agree to not call for the question until we've discussed some of these amendments. I think specifically there are some structural and legal concerns around the timing of this proposed ordinance, some of the inefficiency this might create, and more color on what people mean around criminalizing, right? So, I would just ask the mayor and my colleagues to not call for the vote until we've had a robust discussion and have talked through these amendments, you know, in an effort to not thwart the public's right to this conversation and having the information, the full information, before we make this vote. So, I'm gonna just leave that as an outstanding request.
Councilmember Markano.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protam. So, I have, as I mentioned, a series of amendments that I would like to offer for council's consideration here, beginning with Section ninety-four-one-one-two. So, I would like to, my first amendment would be to strike the section of item number three that says "make an arrest" and replace that with "temporarily detain," and then leave in or otherwise enforce this section and strike against a person camping on public property unless colon. And that will become contextualized in the future portion, and you all should have received a version of this in your backup. So, please let me know if you're not following along. The second amendment that I would like to offer.
Madam Chairman, I mean, Mayor Protam.
Mayor.
I'm wondering, I think it would be better, Councilmember Markano, if you could do each one, let's debate each one separately and vote on each one separately.
Sure, we can do that.
I would rather, we don't vote on each one separately. Why would we do that? I mean, he's proposing a number of amendments.
It's up to Councilmember Markano, I think. Well.
Yeah. Mayor Protam, or I guess, are you still chairing the meeting? I guess you are. I'm fine with discussing each item if, you know, I want to make sure that the public is clear in what we're talking about here and that our colleagues are able to ask any questions if they have them, so.
Okay. Very well.
Yeah, I think it would be best if you went through your amendments and then there's open discussion on the entirety of it.
All right. Well, okay, so I'll try to give a little bit of context then. So, for the strike, the revisions to Section Three, or to Item Three in Section ninety-four-one-two-two, the reason for that is to change it to temporary detention is because that is preferable to an arrest, which can go on someone's record. You all know that getting a record, however minute, can impact your ability to secure employment, housing, et cetera, in the future, so I don't want us to craft a policy that's going to undermine us even more than we're already doing to ourselves here. So, Section Three, Item A, a city employee or law enforcement official that has issued the person in a camp a verbal or written order to move from the camp and take their property with them, and that person has refused or failed to move, colon, and, so that last section is an addition.
I believe that the sponsor of the amendment needs a second. I don't believe there was a second.
Do we, oh, hey, did you make a motion, Councilmember Markano?
I was, so I apologize, since I have several amendments, I was going to just run through them. I thought that that was your question.
You can move the entire amendment. This is an amendment, so you can move the entire amendment, but you need a, there has to be a second, in other words.
Councilmember Markano, do you want to go ahead and make a motion?
Sure. So, I'll move to amend Section ninety-four-one-two-two-three, as I stated.
Okay, wait a minute. Are we doing each section?
That's what I thought y'all just asked me to do.
That's not what I said, I originally said do the entire, all your amendments in the entirety, and then we would, and that would be the motion for your...
Okay, so would you prefer to get a second now, or would you rather me run through these and then ask for a second?
I was...
procedurally, if I could.
Okay, Mayor.
It is a strike, Councilmember Markano, you consider this as a strike below amendment to the, in other words, this in its entirety replaces the, my proposed ordinance in its entirety, and then it would just require one vote, and then, but you still need, you can move it and then you still need a second, but you can move it as a strike below amendment.
Okay, so for clarification then from the city attorney, because I know I'm not the only person that has amendments to offer, if we do that, then in that pass, then the modified version that you all have in your backup with a few tweaks would be the ordinance as it would stand, and then another one of my colleagues is able to then continue to offer amendments, correct?
I think this is gonna be really difficult to follow because you have so many amendments, and then I guess there's more coming from other council members, so for us to vote one by one, I personally don't think that's efficient because you're gonna pass things without knowing what's coming next from another member on an amendment.
All right, so if I can suggest that, let's go through what you all had in your backup since you all should have had a chance to review that, and I did leave my comments in the margins, so you were all able to kind of get an idea of why I'm making some of these suggestions.
And just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but... And just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, and I don't know if anybody else has this issue with their eScribe, but earlier today I did see all your amendments when I went on the city website. I'm not seeing them on my backup on the eScribe. Is anybody else having an issue with that? No?
Mayor Protam.
There's an item called Camping Ordinance Amendments, Marcano.pdf.
May I offer a suggestion?
Yes, Councilmember Muriel.
I was wondering if it's in our backup, if we might be able to use this wonderful technology to share an image for council members.
Yeah, I'm happy to share because I do have it up on my side screen here.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so. And share. All righty, are y'all seeing the ordinance here?
Yes.
All right, great. Sorry, I'm trying to switch my view on the other side so I can see all of you as well. Okay. All right. So, yeah, so I guess we'll start from, we'll take it from the top here. So 94112, you can see the changes here. We strike "make an arrest" to, and change that with "temporarily detain," and then or otherwise enforce remains against a person camping on public, oh, sorry, on public property is stricken unless, and the reason for that is that, again, temporary detention, I think, is preferable to an arrest, which can go on someone's record. As I mentioned, that can make it more difficult for folks to find housing and employment, et cetera. A city employee or a law enforcement official has offered the person in a camp a verbal or written order to move from the camp and take their property with them, and that person has failed, or refused or failed to move. So that's a clarifying addition there. And the city has an indoor shelter option that is realistic, practicable, and safe. And I want to stress the indoor and realistic, practicable, and safe. Indoor would include our pallet shelters, those are considered indoor structures, and realistic, practicable, and safe means that the camp has, the space has to actually exist, it has to be ready for habitation, and it has to meet federal criteria for HUD for what is a safe and, you know, reasonable shelter option, effectively. So the reason I wanted to add that was because when we discussed this in horns a bit, I felt like there was an opportunity for folks to use weasel words with people experiencing homelessness, to get them to opt out. And I want us to make it very clear what the options are that we are providing people with. And then the second part in this section here, in Section B, is that the shelter has agreed to take the person and that the person has refused to move from the camp, which means we actually connected that individual with a provider that has space, and then that in spite of that, being offered a realistic, practicable, and safe shelter option, that person refused. In that case, you're clear to enact a sweep. Again, I want us to make sure that we're not, you know, potentially fooling folks here. So with item C, I struck exception to this section and just clarified that if a person is offered in writing a realistic and practical and, practicable and safe, you'll see that repeated throughout, option, and the shelter option is available to that person, and that person refuses to go to the shelter option that has agreed to accept them, and the person refuses or fails to move the camp location when ordered, this person may be issued a citation and is subject to temporary detention instead of arrest in order to facilitate the person's move to the available shelter. Again, if people get a record, we are going to end up effectively criminalizing homelessness here. That can cause a whole lot of other issues that will still leave these folks without shelter and ultimately back on our streets. So Section 4 here is any person cited for and convicted of violating the section shall not be subject to the general penalties provisions as provided in Section 113. So that's as is from Mayor Kaufman's ordinance. I wanted to add a violation of this section shall not constitute disorderly conduct pursuant to Section 94110A5 of our city code. That is what is colloquially called contempt of cop, and it is something that the Attorney General's investigation yielded that we overuse and can then, it's a charge that can lead to people being impacted with the general penalties, which is an indirect way to get people basically criminalized through a sweep process. And I did check in with our Public Defender's Office. We have a tremendous amount of unhoused folks who do come through already, as is with our existing policies, for trespassing and for contempt of cop. So I don't want us to, again, compound and institutionalize that problem. I'm sorry, I'm hearing mumbling. Does anyone have a question or a comment?
Why don't we go through the end? Let's just go through the whole thing. Last question.
So Section 5, I strike the, or any form of cover or protection from the elements other than clothing. Again, this is, I think, an area where we get right into cruel and unusual punishment. And there is also, except, there was a separate section where this is repeated that we, I removed blanket as well, just because there is, there are many other uses for blankets other than camping. I think the definitions for camping and for setting up a camp already kind of cover that without the need to add blanket because the way I read that, you could potentially cite someone for camping for reading a book on a bench with a blanket at night, or, you know, potentially taking their baby in a stroller covered by a blanket around at night. So I think that we need to be very careful with the language and not be overbroad. I also struck the camp or camping can include using a vehicle for overnight occupancy, where overnight occupancy or overnight camping violates code or another city rule or regulation that are not otherwise authorized by the city. And I just need to share this with you because this is from a constituent. Illegally parking a vehicle was the very first thing that led this person into homelessness when the vehicle was all that she and her mother had. That car was impounded, her mother lost her job as a result, she lost the car because of losing her job, and then all of her three-year-old daughter's possessions were lost, I'm talking photos, clothing, toys, et cetera. This resulted in her becoming separated from her daughter, engaging in sex work just to make ends meet, and eventually enduring a very long and incredibly abusive relationship just to stay sheltered. So if we're doing this kind of stuff, I need you to understand that's the road that we're paving. I don't want us to go down that road. We already have safe camping areas, not everyone has, you know, you heard earlier, is aware of them, and putting this in here, I think, is just leading us down a very ugly route. Moving on, evidence of unauthorized camps or unauthorized camping includes, as you can see here, I again struck the, or any form of cover protecting from the elements other than clothing. Again, you can, these overbroad definitions, I think, are going to get us into trouble. Moving on, this was just a grammatical fix here when I added an or before bedroll, and again, blankets or any other form of protection from the elements other than clothing was struck. Moving on to abatement of unauthorized camps, again, you see realistic, practicable, and safe, and then repeated that these, that these said options will accept all of the individuals in an unauthorized camp, meaning we must be able to house everybody who we are sweeping in one go. Prerequisites for the abatement of camps, again, available shelter options, so we must have enough realistic, practicable, and safe indoor options for all the folks who are going to be swept, and those said shelter options must be willing to accept all of the individuals and families in unauthorized camp, in an unauthorized camp. The notice requirements, I just added here in red, as you see, any occupants present in a camp on the day of the abatement shall be offered placement in a shelter option which has agreed to accept the person. That's the addition, which has agreed to accept the person, and advise them that services are available for them. And then in Section 114, 110, I changed the minimum notice period back to seven days from 72 hours. An earlier draft of this ordinance reflected that ruling from the federal court that impacted Denver. I would rather us follow that guideline, fully expecting that we will likely be challenged or, you know, something will happen and cause us to follow that same guideline as well. So I'd rather us be proactive rather than react to that issue as well. And with that, I believe that covers, yeah, I don't think I missed anything here. I believe that covers all of my comments.
Mayor Protam.
Yes, Mayor.
Mayor Protam, if I could go through these amendments and as well, I would like to defer to drafting on some of these amendments, not, I don't want them to opine in terms of their opinion, that would be inappropriate, but in terms of the legal interpretation of what we're trying to do here. And so I think if we go to Section 94122, subparent 3, we, see, it says, no city employee authorized to issue a citation shall issue a citation, make an arrest, and that is struck and replaced with temporarily detained. If I could defer to counsel in terms of the difference between, so we're in a situation where we've, in this version, which is not the same version that was introduced six months ago, but what it says essentially is that we've decriminalized, there are no penalties or fines for violating the law in terms of unauthorized encampment. The issue is if somebody refused to move after given the appropriate notice, after being informed that there was an alternate shelter option for them, then in fact, if they refused to move and they were given a lawful order to move, then what gives the authority for APD to move that individual in terms of this language?
Well, the case law allows just what you said. If a person in a camp is offered a shelter option and they refuse that, that person can be issued a criminal citation. Does that answer your question?
Well, but I'm, in terms of, can they be moved using the language temporarily detained versus arrest?
Well, the term temporarily detained is a vague term, not defined in the law, whereas the term arrest has been litigated extensively in criminal law, and it's very well-defined parameters. It means something very specific, but temporarily detained is vague and opens the ordinance up to litigation.
Okay, then we have against a person camping on public property, well, it's public and private property, so what's the value of that language? Against a person camping on public property, or is that just redundant?
It's, I have no legal concern about striking that. It's a policy decision whether to keep it in or not. It just clarifies that this ordinance only applies to camping on public property.
It refers to private and public property. Well, okay, my, my version refers to both. I'm sorry, please clarify that statement.
What was that, Mayor?
No, it's public and private property.
Oh, okay, I again missed it. Oh, wow. Oh, the difference between public and private property? Well, this ordinance is only prohibiting, making it a criminal act to camp on public property. It does not make camping on private property a criminal act.
Because that already is. I mean, there's no trespassing on private property.
It's, this, this ordinance, this unauthorized camp ordinance only prohibits, makes it illegal to camp on public property.
Okay, so then 9A, you say that person has refused or failed to move.
That, I have no legal concern about that. It clarifies what the purpose is of this ordinance. If that person refuses, if they've been offered a shelter option and they refuse to leave, then it can be issued a citation.
Okay, but that, but that's already basically stated, though, without that.
It's been stated before, yes.
Okay, so that's redundant language.
Mayor, can I?
I'm going to finish going through this. The city has an indoor shelter option that is realistic, practicable, and safe. Are those, they're not defined in the amendment as to what that means, and those are not terms of art. Am I correct?
The terms realistic, practicable, and safe, they are not defined, they are vague. What might be safe to, what might be realistic, practical, and safe to one person may not be to another person, so those terms, realistic, practicable, and safe, could open the ordinance up to litigation.
Okay. Then we have, and that shelter has agreed to take the person, and the person has refused to move from the camp, I mean, that's, it's already understood that the city has to provide a shelter option for that individual.
That's correct, and it's, excuse me, Your Honor, but the, before we can even post a camp to abate it, we have to have a shelter option available for that, so this is redundant in that sense.
Okay.
And the idea that they, well, again, it's redundant if the person refuses to move after being offered a shelter option.
Okay. Then it deletes, then in C, subparent 3C, exception to this section, I'm not sure what that means. Can you explain that?
I don't know what the purpose is in striking that.
Okay, then it says if a person is ordered in writing, and again, a realistic, practicable, and safe, and I think we already discussed that there's no definition in this as to what that means.
There's a concern that the terms, what does in writing mean? Does the posting of a sign constitute a writing? Or when we offer a shelter option, I, it just, how we deliver a writing to a person that might be still in a camp that we are abating, it makes enforcement extremely difficult. And again, the terms realistic, practical, and safe, they're vague, and I don't know what that means.
Okay, then we, again, repeating, has agreed to accept that person, then a citation and is subject to a temporary detention, and I think we've already discussed that, versus arrest, in order to facilitate the person's move to the available shelter. Then subparent 4, any person cited for and convicted, it goes on, and then can you explain the, then it goes, the maximum penalty provision here?
Since we've already said above that the, violating this ordinance, the general penalty provisions of the city code do not apply for violating this ordinance, the first part that prescribes a specific punishment is a practical option, it specifically identifies what the punishment should be, a fine not to exceed $25 in the community service, that's all practical and a policy decision.
So that part would actually clarify?
It clarifies, and it, I have no legal concern about that part.
Okay.
The last sentence, a violation of this section shall not constitute disorderly conduct, well, that's, goes unsaid, that this, it's not necessary to have it, this, what, this ordinance is just this ordinance, it's 94122. It doesn't need, you don't, I don't see a purpose for that last sentence.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, or Mayor Protam? I'm sorry, I'd like a.
First, I want to say something because this is really a competing ordinance, what you have with all these amendments. I do think we should vote on the entirety of your, it's basically a new ordinance.
Right, well, I, Madam, can I finish going through it?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so then on 114, 106, under definitions, in. Okay, so, then, on 114106, under definitions, in, under evidence of authorized camps or unauthorized camps, it states, it strikes or any form of cover or protection from the elements other than clothing. Can you discuss that?
The terms, that term that struck, that came straight out of case law, and if you strike that, there's a possibility that, that, it, this could cause this ordinance to be declared unconstitutional. It was put in because the case law requires that ex, that exception.
Very well. Okay, so then we go to, and when we're defining shelter, it strikes blankets or any form of cover or protection from the elements other than clothing. I'm sorry, did we just?
So if you strike the term blankets or other forms of protection, you're creating a loophole, so if, if I am camping overnight and the only thing I'm having over me is a blanket, then I would not be violating this ordinance, so it's a loophole.
Okay, very well. And then 114107, realistic, practicable, and safe, again, no definition in the ordinance itself, and none of these are terms of art, am I correct?
That's correct, they're not defined.
Okay, and then, "And the realistic, practicable, and safe indoor available shelter options will accept all of the individuals and families in an unauthorized camp," I think, that's already, does that clarify anything? I think that language is already there.
Case law does not require the city to have a shelter option available for every person that's homeless in the city before we make a, a crime to be in an unauthorized camp.
Okay.
So that, this makes it very difficult to enforce if that's a requirement.
Okay, then 114108, again, we use the terms realistic, practicable, and safe, and I think we've discussed that. Then we have, "And the realistic," again, that, that same language, available shelter options and willing to accept, okay, so that is the same language. Then we go to 114109, subparent one, which has agreed to accept the person, and I think that's redundant. Then we go to 114110, subparent one, taking, replacing a 72-hour notice with a seven-day notice. I wonder if you could speak to the situation, so, if I understand the situation in Denver, when they got that court order, they were literally doing abatements in the same day that they gave notice, is that correct?
That, that is correct. The seven-day advance notice that Denver uses came from a settlement of their first lawsuit. Denver agreed to provide seven days' advance notice. Then Denver got sued a second time for not following that settlement agreement, and the judge ruling on the Denver motion about that case stated that Denver had to abide what they agreed to in the settlement of seven days, but the judge also allowed the, Denver, to abate camps when there was a public health threat or a safety threat, and allowed that abatement, the advance notice of 48 hours to be sufficient. So Denver has both a 70, seven-day notice and a 48-hour notice, so our 72-hour notice is a compromise between the two, and most of the items that we have been using the past six months to abate a camp have been issues of public safety and public health.
And what, what does some of the other communities, surrounding communities do in terms of?
Reasons why we abate a camp?
Yes.
If there's evidence of fires, if there's, if they have propane tanks, butane tanks, if there's hazardous materials, if there's uneaten, rotten, discarded food, which can be a, draw rodents to the area, if there's fecal material, if there's hypodermic neegles present, if there's indoor furniture outside, which is, again, can cause rodent infestations, if the camp location is, interferes with stormwater maintenance, or if it's in a flood zone, or in an area prone to flooding, that's a safety threat. When the camp layout doesn't allow access to, for emergency services, so if there was a 911 call, someone's having a problem, the rescue people cannot get in, that's a problem, a safety issue. The violations of the International Fire Code and the Building Code are, again, safety issues. They, if the residents are connecting to electrical fixtures like street pole lights or other things, that unauthorized electrical connection is a safety issue. There are, there have been camps that have undermined the public infrastructure in particular, literally along I-225, the, around Sixth Avenue, camps have dug into the hillside there, which, again, causes a safety issue for traffic above.
And I believe that there was an incident that occurred over the weekend on Second and Sable, where a culvert.
There was a recent camp under Colfax, just east of Airport Boulevard. The culvert was 32 feet long, there had been multiple fires in the culvert, definitely a very unsafe condition, and the fire department in, trying to enter into that culvert, they lost radio contacts, so they had to withdraw the fire personnel for safety issues. So, yeah, that, that, that particular camp, because of where it was located and the depth, it was an absolute safety hazard for the people there and the first responders that had to deal with the fires.
Okay.
Mayor Protam?
Mayor Protam, I, I have concluded my remarks.
The mayor, are you done, Mayor?
And I stand in opposition to the Marcano, strike below amendment.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Coombs?
My point of order was just, was Councilmember Marcano gonna get a chance to respond to any of the remarks about the intent of his amendments, but now that seems too fast.
Mayor Protam?
Mayor Protam?
Who's talking? Councilmember Marcano?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I did want to respond a bit here, because I know we just spent a whole lot of time on the notice, so those last points, I'm not really sure why we went into a whole conversation about when you can order folks to move immediately, because none of that was changed, so I kind of feel like there might have been a little bit of a theatrical intent there, that was not changed. The only thing that changed there was the seven-day notice from a 72-hour notice. The, going back to the realistic, practicable, and safe indoor phrasing, it's my understanding that part of what we're doing and part of why we have conversations like this when we're crafting legislation is to create a legislative history, and I think I made the intent of what I meant by realistic, practicable, and safe, meaning realistic, meaning that this actually exists, practicable, meaning that it is ready to be used, and safe, following the HUD definitions for what is considered safe and dignified shelter space. I thought that that was kind of why we have these conversations and why I'm able to explain to my colleagues and the public what it is we're trying to accomplish here. Some of what I think the mayor just said was redundant, it is, I think, for clarification purposes. I don't think it's necessarily redundant, in fact, a lot of the law that I have read is exceptionally redundant, because you don't want folks to be able to gotcha you at one In terms of the blankets, it was my understanding that you would still be considered publicly camping, because you'd be sleeping outdoors at night. We specifically say what camping is not, and sleeping outdoors at night, you know, in, in a space, even if you were using a blanket, would potentially be considered camping. So I'm not, I don't follow, or I guess, maybe I just disagree with the interpretation that City Attorney Joyce expressed there, but that is not the intent of removing blanket. Again, my intent of removing blanket is so that we don't inadvertently, you know, hit someone who is reading a book on a bench with a blanket at night, or, you know, moving their, or walking, you know, their child in a stroller, you know, at night with a blanket or something like that, that would potentially become considered camping, because you're specifically calling out a blanket, which can be, yes, an accessory to camping, but does not make camping in and of itself. So, yeah, also, with regards to the violation of, this shall not constitute disorderly conduct, I'd like a comment from City Attorney Joyce on this, because it's my understanding, this is some, this is a method that we currently have on housed folks ending up in the criminal legal system in our city today, by basically being charged by, with disorderly conduct, and that this is something that also happens in Denver and other cities who have similar policies on the books. So I felt it was necessary to call out that specific thing, because no one is necessarily being cited for, or what will be eligible for general penalties just for the act of camping outdoors, but if someone decides to say, oh, well, now you're, you know, disobeying me, or charge them for disorderly conduct, then you can effectively end up criminalizing homelessness through that. So I'd like your comment on that, please.
Okay, I'll, the, your reference to the disorderly conduct charge, I don't believe it, believe it's necessary, whether other jurisdictions are charging that or not, that's not the intent of this ordinance, this is just to charge 94122. So beyond that, I don't know why, what the purpose is for that. With respect to the, the camping and the bed, blankets issue, the way camping is defined in the mayor's ordinance, it says overnight occupancy is what's prohibited, and camping does not, and it specifically says camping does not include napping during the day or picnicking. So you can lay out a blanket and picnic and still not violate this ordinance, it's when you use a blanket or other material to sleep overnight, to stay overnight. And I've, I've...
Right, I don't see where we're actually at odds with what I said in terms of my intent for, you know, removing blanket then, because my goal is to ensure that someone who is reading a book under, you know, on a lamp, under a lamp on a bench at night is not considered to be camping.
If they are spending...
Sleeping overnight is, overnight occupancy is, again, like, something that is very specifically called out here, so why would we need to include blanket then? Because you can do that with or without a blanket.
By eliminating the term blanket, in my opinion, you're creating a loophole, that if they're using a blanket and they're spending, they're camping overnight, you've just allowed them to do that. And I think to get to your last question, when you use the terms realistic, practicable, and safe to mean exist, why not just use the term exist instead of those three vague terms?
Sure, if that's something that you feel would be better language, I'm fine with considering that a friendly amendment than...
No, I think it's unnecessary language altogether. I think it says that in the ordinance already, the mayor's version. If the city has to have a shelter option available, or we can post it, abate it, so I don't think it's necessary to have that language.
Okay.
At all.
Excuse me, Mayor Protam?
Councilmember Sundberg.
I move to vote on Councilmember Marcano's amendments as a whole.
Are you calling for the vote?
Calling for the question.
For the question? Okay, so is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion, Mayor Protam?
There's no discuss.
There's no, oh, sorry, it's non-debatable, okay, go ahead, and Katie, can you pull that up for a vote?
Yes, it's now open for vote.
I kicked out of my session here, sorry.
Council, Mayor, how would you like to vote on this?
Mayor votes aye.
And Councilmember Marcano, I can put your vote in for you.
No.
Okay, the motion passes with six votes to call for the question on Marcano's amendments. With the no votes...
Wait a minute. I'm sorry. Was this a vote, this was a vote on?
This was the vote to call the question, is that correct?
But it's, I think it, unfortunately, on the, on the e-scribe, it says, "We're voting on the abatement or, ordinance versus the vote..."
Right, for the motion.
"...to, on, on Councilmember Sundberg's motion." So can we just do that over?
I'm sorry, yes, it says, "Motion to vote on Marcano's amendment," so this was to call the question, my apologies. So we can, we can open the vote again, but the motion is on the table, is to call for the question for Councilmember Marcano's amendments.
Okay, we're ca, we're calling, yeah, everybody got that? Okay. Oops, I lost my thing.
It's not coming back up for me, but I don't need to change my vote.
We're opening it back up, Councilmember Coombs.
Thank you.
Sundberg. Okay, the vote is now open. Mayor, you voted aye, is that correct?
Mayor votes aye.
Is this just for clarification on the original motion or on the one?
This was on call for the question. We're voting on call for the question.
Skipping debate entirely then on the, okay.
On the Marcano amendments or on the whole proposal?
No, we're calling, it's a call for the question on the Marcano amendment.
Okay.
As a whole.
The motion passes with nine votes, two no's from Councilmember Mario and Councilmember Coombs.
Okay, so do we have a motion now on, on Councilmember Marcano's amendment?
I thought that's what we just voted on.
No, that was the call for the question.
Okay, I have like three levels of votes here now, getting a little lost.
Right, we are now going to vote on yours amendment.
Yeah, so if I could just have the record corrected then to say no on the call for the question.
Okay, Katie, can you make that correction for Councilmember Marcano?
Yes, Councilmember Marcano will put you down as a no, that would make it three no's for that.
Okay, so now can we, I can entertain a motion on the Marcano amendment?
Yeah, automatically goes back to.
Oh, what, automatically, okay. Oh my God, okay, got it. And Katie, you're pulling it up on the e-scribe?
Yes, so we're, just to clarify, we are voting on Councilmember Marcano's amendment as a whole.
Yes.
And the motion was made by...
Oh.
So do we need a separate motion and second?
I guess Councilmember Sundberg and second by Jurenski.
Okay.
That was the call for the question.
That was both.
Who actually moved the, Councilman?
Oh, you're right, go ahead.
I'm not charging.
Okay, who made the motion?
I made the original question.
No, on...
No, the Marcano amendment.
Councilmember Marcano, are you making a motion on your own amendment?
I made the motion, I do not recall who seconded.
I don't think we got a second, because there was all kinds of weird...
Yes, it was.
Okay.
So can we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilmember Marcano, and we have a second from Councilmember Coombs.
Okay, the vote is now open. And this, again, to clarify, is the vote for Councilmember Marcano's amendments as a whole. a whole. And Mayor Protam Bergen, you said you wanted yours changed to...
Yes, I accidentally hit the wrong button.
Do you want to vote yes or no?
I want to vote no.
Okay, the motion does not pass with four votes in affirmative, six no votes.
Mayor Protam? Councilmember Mario?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on that last process, that was the most, like, frustrating, unhelpful review of amendments. I think we should have taken them separately, because now I feel like everyone just got lost, and we're going to vote up or down, there was no nuance there, so, and then additionally, that, that motion to call for the vote was exactly what I was talking about in my opening remarks, about shutting down discussion, thwarting discussion, discussion on, on a very important topic. So, I'm very disappointed that that was a procedural maneuver that was enacted to shut down that conversation. I think that we could have paused and talked about those amendments separately, instead of hearing the city attorney that drafted the legislation comment line by line, in a very unhelpful, confusing manner, especially if you're on the phone. We, Councilmember Marcano didn't have the opportunity to have a non, I would say bias, because he wrote the legislation, non-bias city attorney opine on the conversation. So, I was just thoroughly frustrated by that process, and I don't think we really gave it a fair opportunity for, for discussion, and it was called to shut down discussion.
Mayor Protam?
Amendments, you still might have amendments.
Okay, so, are there any other amendments before we move on to vote on the 14A? Mayor Protam? Councilmember Mario?
Thank you, I do have a couple amendments, if we could share those on the screen. And yours prior, I would have printed and handed you a copy, but this is probably better either way. Okay, so I just want to, kind of, high level, I would like to discuss these one by one, because I don't want to engage in that unhelpful back and forth, but I would like to just kind of talk about them one by one. So, you can see that the First Amendment is to amend Section 4 of this ordinance, the proposed ordinance, it's the abatement of unauthorized camps. So, my First Amendment is to, that's that first piece, so no unauthorized camp shall be abated by the city until such time as the city or other interested entity has enough shelter options available for all the homeless population in the city. The reason I've included that language is, I don't know if you caught in that back and forth, the city of Aurora actually doesn't have to have enough shelter beds for this to be enforceable. So, all of the rhetoric saying that this is the humane thing to do is a lie, essentially. We actually only have to legally offer a shelter bed, we don't actually have to have the number of shelter beds. So, I think it's disingenuous and confusing, the way I understand it is, let's say, somebody's going to abate or sweep a camp, and if it, you know, if they, if they refuse, that's a whole nother separate process, right? If they refuse to go to a shelter, that's a separate process of how we deal with that. But in the scenario that they do accept to be relocated to a shelter, if we don't have enough shelter beds to accommodate that camp on that particular night, then it's, it's unenforceable. So, I have many concerns, that just sounds very convoluted and confusing to the, like, the general public, it's unclear, that, that is the interpretation that I've gathered from the, our city attorneys. And so, if we're, if we're really truly trying to make this about being humane, and, and actually supporting our friends and neighbors, as we've heard in our public comment, I think there needs to be more clarity and definitive language, that this should be only enforceable if and when we do actually have enough shelter beds, not saying one thing, and then legally we only have to offer a shelter bed. So, that is the rationale behind that First Amendment.
Okay, so, you'd like to have a second?
I, I would.
Is there a second to that particular amendment? Okay, we have...
Second.
I think I had Councilmember Medina as a second. Okay, discussion? Okay, I would like to make a point, because it says, unless there is enough shelter options available for all the homeless population in the city, but when we do the, if we're going to do a, a ban on a particular encampment, we're not doing, and maybe this is for staff, we're not doing a ban on all encampments in one night, it's usually, one is identified, and then we offer shelter alternatives, correct?
The, with the proposal for Councilmember Rio, case law says we do not need to have, provide shelter for the homeless, but with this proposed amendment, first of all, we don't have an accurate count of the number of homeless in the city, and effectively, it will prevent the abatement of any camp.
Point of clarification?
In the city.
I'm, I still actually have the floor, so this would basically take away the entire purpose of the camping ban, like, we would not be able to enforce it at all.
We wouldn't be able to abate a camp at all.
Okay, so I, I am against this particular section of the amendment.
Can I clarify?
Councilmember Mario?
So, see, that's where I have an issue, because it, it's saying that we're not going to be able to enforce, actually, would you mind repeating your statement one more time?
If you require the city to have a, a shelter option available for all the homeless population in the city, first of all, we do not know, have an accurate number of, the number of homeless, and we do not have shelter options for every single person in the city, homeless person in the city.
I know that.
We could not enforce, we could not abate a camp again.
Okay, so there we go, all right, I'm clear. I, I already know, we already know, that there are not, not enough shelter beds, so I want to interrupt the narrative that this is in any way humane, that accompanying resolution after this means literally nothing, because we're directing the city manager to create enough shelter beds, except, in order for this to be enforceable, we don't actually have to have enough shelter beds. The, the next bit about, we don't actually have an accurate count of homelessness, what is the point, point in time count? What is the purpose of that? Who defines what is the correct, or the, you know, the legal amount of people experiencing homelessness? I thought the point in time count that the city conducts annually, is mandated by HUD, other cities use to have a count of people experiencing homelessness, was an accurate way to do so. So, can you elaborate why that's not a reasonable threshold?
We, Councilmember Maria, we could change the way you have written this to make it possible so we could abate camps, but the point in time count is for HUD financing purposes, and that count can vary weekly, based on the number of people that come in and out of the city. And for us, this would require, as it's written, for us to monitor, to know how many homeless people are out there before we abate a camp, and have a shelter option available for everyone in a camp. But there's also, there are also situations where, I'll use the mayor, for example, if he had, when he was living in, and if he had lived in an unauthorized camp during Christmas in Aurora, we did not, and do not need to provide him a shelter option before giving him a ticket, because he has his own shelter available to him, the city does not need to provide him a second shelter option. So, we could give the mayor, if he, a ticket, without having a shelter.
Okay, but I'm not asking about somebody pretending to be homeless. Did you, if, I'm sorry, that was just like a...
Please, no more disruptions, or we will take another reset.
That was just not a helpful example, only because we're, we know the mayor's not homeless, he was pretending, so like, I, I know that, that's not what I'm interested in. I'm still confused why our point in time count, what, who defines what the legal threshold of, like, number of homeless people in, in the city of Aurora is? I, I thought the point in time count was that benchmark, and maybe Jessica Prosser can add some nuance.
So, you want to explain the point in time count?
Sure, Councilmember Mario, I can just kind of elaborate on the point in time count, it's a good estimate, it's not going to be the perfect number, it's usually an undercount typically, is the way that HUD would explain that. I think if we were looking for a good number, I would use about the 150-person number, that's what we saw during a seven-day activation over the past seven days while it was very cold, we had anywhere from 160 to 180 individuals that came into shelter out of encampments. So, we don't have a specific count in any given time, there's people coming and going, you know, experiencing homelessness in Aurora, the point in time count is a good snapshot in time of an estimate of the number of folks experiencing homelessness, but we wouldn't be able to come up with a number any given day, it fluctuates.
Sure, so if, if I was able to, the, the point remains, we can argue which number would be the best, or, you know, given, you know, is it an annual number, do we need to have, you know, 594 beds in a year, or 150 beds a week available? I'm open to a, a way to rewrite this, so that that is more clear, however, the, the point remains that currently, we only have to offer a shelter bed, we don't actually have to have the number of, a sufficient amount of shelter beds for this to be enforceable. I don't think that's humane, right? We're talking about how this ordinance has been presented, the impacts of this ordinance, I think that that's, I think that's wrong, that we don't have the adequate number of shelter beds. So, if this needs to be amended to reflect a more accurate picture of that, I'm open to that as well, but the intent is the same, for me.
Okay, do we have further discussion, please?
Mayor Protam?
Councilmember Coombs?
So, I think what we can clarify here is, right, that what's being said is not that we need to really adequately address the unsheltered homelessness in our city, and that is a claim that has been made both times that this ordinance has been brought up, is that what we're really trying to do is help people and address the issue that they're having in a meaningful way, and so, I think that this discussion highlights that that's not what's really happening with this ordinance, what's happening is, we have to have enough beds to abate a given camp. So, that might mean that all we're directing the city attorney to do is create 10 beds that are routinely available to abate any camp of the size of 10 people, and that we're just cycling people through those 10 beds, and then sweeping them along. And so, that's not effective, that's going to result in the people from the Cherry Creek State Park camp ending up very quickly over on the Cherry Creek-Spillway Trail, or the people in the Mission Viejo Shopping Center ending up down the street, along a trail, or in a park. And so, I do think that it's really important to be clear, that this doesn't actually provide a solution in that sense. The other thing that could occur, and that we've heard from some of the testimony and public comment tonight, has occurred in Denver, is that this incentivizes these mega camps, because essentially, if people are together in a camp of 70, and we don't have 70 beds available, or even 30, then we become unable to abate that camp per this ordinance. So, I think we need to be aware of those considerations and those implications, and that seems to be, I think, having Councilmember Murillo's amendment here would actually address those problems.
So, I know Councilmember Mario wants to make a, or get clarification, but the way it's written currently, we would not be able to enforce the camping ban, so Councilmember Mario?
Thank you. Given Jessica Prosser, who's with our housing team's comment, do you have language that you would suggest to add to this amendment? Again, I'm trying to actualize the statements and conversations made, that this is supposed to be humane, the accompanying resolution is supposed to make sure that we have enough shelter beds when we are sweeping folks, so I'm just trying to get the, the language that actually reflects that, that rhetoric.
So, Councilmember Mario, if we were reflecting the current practices of what we do today, we would add that we would need shelter space available for the camps being abated at that time. So, right now, if we're looking ahead a week or two, we're looking to see how many shelter beds we have available prior to starting the process. So, it would be available shelter beds for the current camps being abated.
For the current camps being abated, so we still don't have to have all shelters for all folks before we abate? Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
So, if I could give, give you some language that you're looking for?
Sure, yep.
What you wanted, what you want is those, those in the encampment, or those identified in the point in time count for the year. Now, that's going to make the ordinance unenforceable, but it's getting to the point that you're trying to make, that you're trying to cover all of the homeless, so, so you would do for, for the encampment, or those, or, or the number identified in the point in count.
Okay, so, thank you for the, the language that I requested to our city attorney. After thinking, my point is so that we have the actual number of beds for folks who are experiencing homelessness before we enact this, so I think I'm actually just going to leave the language as is, I, I don't agree that we just need to have a sufficient number of beds for the camps that we're abating, because we could strategically abate, you know, groups that, like, we have enough shelter beds for that number amount of people, it's still not providing long-term solutions. So, I will just keep my amendment as is, and ask that we vote, so that we can move on to the next, next one.
Okay, can we go ahead and vote, or is there further discussion? Oh, I guess it's pulled up on your e-scribe. So, yeah. Oh, I keep hitting the wrong button. I'm using my left hand.
Mayor Protam, point of order?
Councilmember Coombs?
I think that that's just the First Amendment.
Yes, it's just the first.
Okay.
Yes.
Because it says Murillo's amendments, plural, so I just...
Yeah, thank you for the clarification, we're just voting only on this one that was just presented, the first part, and you're going to present the second one.
The motion does not pass with four yes votes and six no votes.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Mario.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, all right, so my Second Amendment is to add in Section 4 of the current ordinance, as, as written, that all personal items removed by the city during the abatement process shall be stored in a secure, protected location, and shall be returned to the lawful owner upon request and verification of the owner. So, this was my intent of codifying, right, we are dealing with people's lives and, and their property, if we're going to force them away from where they're at, I think at a minimum, we should be clear on what the process is, so I think it's important for us to codify how we're going to handle people's belongings, so that, you know, we don't get the, the complaints that Denver has with, you know, trashing people's personal belongings, that might be everything they own in the world that is tossed away, you know, in the event that they are swept from the location that they're at, so at a minimum, I would... So at a minimum, I wanted to clarify that this is the process we'll follow.
May I ask a question on this? And Jessica, if you could answer, do we currently have place at the Day Resource Center where they can store their belongings in those lockers?
There's very limited storage at the Day Resource Center, such that someone could store a backpack or something very small and personal. By practice, when we are abating a camp, if something looks like a personal documentation item, it is set to the side.
Okay. So if it's documents, they can be, they can be stored, documents?
If someone arrives at the Day Resource Center and they have personal items on them, they can be stored temporarily while they're on site at the Day Resource Center. When they leave, they would take them with them.
Okay. So if we were to abate an, an encampment, let's say it was an encampment with 15 people, would we not be able to have our outreach vans help those individuals get to the lockers and store those items?
Yes. Outreach goes out the day before the encampment. They're offered a ride and they can take items with them.
Okay. So I think maybe the issue might be how, how much of the personal items can be stored, right? So if, if you said all personal items, are you saying we would not have storage for that?
That's correct.
And city manager, do we not have any vacant buildings or anything where we could store items?
Not at this time, we don't.
Okay. So none of our buildings that we currently have, the libraries, any of that?
Well, we have some buildings, one building that's under renovation. We have a building that's not in very good shape, that's small.
What about AMC? We have, we don't, we're not even using this building half the time. I've offered to sell it before, but you didn't like that.
We could, we could inventory if council wanted us to do that and see what space we had. We might have some concerns. I, I, I mean, we don't know what we'd really be getting into in terms of the types of things that we would be storing. And just in terms, I would have some concerns maybe about cleanliness and what we'd be bringing into a building.
Yeah. And then responsibility, I guess.
We, we haven't done this before, so.
Okay. So the reason I asked those questions, Councilmember Maria, is because in, in theory, I do, you know, would like us to be able to do this. I'm just looking, you know, how, how could we accomplish this to some degree practically?
Mayor Protam?
Yes. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm actually really sympathetic to the intent of this. I don't think the government should take property and destroy it. But I, I just have some questions, and I don't know if these are for Councilmember Maria, if they're for staff, for our city manager, city attorney, whatever, but I kind of want to go through a couple of these. So maybe the first one is, how are we defining personal items? And I don't, I don't know, Councilmember Maria, if you want to answer that, if that's defined somewhere, I, what, what, what does personal items mean?
Councilmember Gardner, in practice today, what we do, if there's something that looks like an identification, medication, a passport, important documents, those are things that we deem to not be destructed and destroyed. And so they're set to the side during the abatement process. And either, you know, street outreach would take those, or they're just left to see if somebody comes back for them.
Okay.
So they're set to the side.
And I don't know if you wanted to?
Yeah, thank you. So to me, like, people are going to be carrying more than just personal identification, right? They, you're trying to keep themselves warm, they might have, you know, so, all of that to be said. That's, I would define personal items as, is what you just stated, Jessica, and other articles that, like, of clothing, you know, tents, like, their, their property, like, barring, like, sanitation issues, or, you know, like, if there's a, a shopping, you know, may, maybe that won't necessarily qualify, but that's theirs, right? Like, I, I would love some language if somebody has, you know, a better way to clarify that, but I think for all intents and purposes, those things that people use to keep themselves, you know, safe and warm, blankets, tents, you know, obviously perishable items, not going to work, that, that type of thing, clothing, changes of clothing, things that won't expire over, you know, however long they'll be in jail or otherwise, you know.
Okay. And then my next question is at the end, verification of ownership. How would we do that in all instances? And I don't know, Councilmember Maria, if you want to talk to what your intent was, or staff, if you have, you know, suggestion, or I, I just, I'm concerned about how we would accomplish that.
I would defer to the city attorney on that.
I mean, because essentially, if there's no identification?
I have, I don't know, can I make a suggestion? And I don't know if this would work, so maybe, you know, Jessica or the attorneys can speak to this. What if we, if you amended this to be that the city will make all efforts to secure belongings? Will make every effort to secure belongings? I, I think we're going to get in trouble with guaranteeing this because of some of the questions proposed. Does that, I don't know if that helps. Can anybody answer that?
That may be too vague.
Of course.
It, that, that might be very difficult to define.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protam, I have?
Go ahead, Councilmember Gardner.
And then my last is, and this is a question for Councilmember Maria, but would you be open to a length of time? And I say that because even a private business, for example, a financial institution that is holding assets after a certain length of time, that gets turned back over to the governments, the great Colorado payback. So, so my question is, would you be open to some kind of length of time so we don't have an indefinite storage potentially of materials?
Yes. Yeah, I, I would be open to that in terms of your earlier question around verification of ownership. I'm, I'm assuming we could find a process of putting a tag on somebody's property and saying this is, this person's property. I feel like that, that shouldn't be the holdup. I feel like there's a way to identify somebody's property.
Yeah. And then lastly, and this is, I don't know for, for Jessica or for the city manager, but, I mean, just general thoughts on kind of creating and implementing a process like this? I mean, I know we don't currently have a process in place, nor do we have a facility, but if we were to implement something like this, what are your thoughts on what it would look like, costs, things like that? I mean, I know that's kind of nebulous because we don't know how much we're going to take in and all that, but I, I'd be curious what your thoughts were. I don't know, Jim or Jessica, who wants to take a stab at that?
For how long?
I'll offer a couple of things that other cities do that may or may not be successful. Some have a container that's put to the side that looks like a, you know, a rolling kind of trash can, and they'll put items in there, they'll leave them for an additional 72 hours if somebody comes and collects them, and then the abatement company comes back and picks up the trash can. Other cities have put things into evidence, which we can become problematic if you're trying to have people identify. It's a storage situation, so they essentially, if there is something identified, they become evidence and people would have to come to collect their evidence. So those are two things I've heard from other cities that they do. I'm not sure how successful they are. We've not looked into those options here.
And I'm going to add too that there is a jurisdiction, it might even be Denver, they ask the person that's going to a shelter, do you want to store something?
Right.
And what do you, let that, that person identify what they want to store? And if it's not, if it's storable, if it's not going to create a health hazard by being in a can, or basically a trash can with a lid, if it could be stored safely, then we could set, it could be set aside, and that person then would have, say, a receipt to identify which container is theirs, and then they can claim it after a certain period of time.
I think I saw Councilmember Zivonic had his head up.
I agree with what Councilmember Gardner said. I'm, I'm sympathetic to this idea of the government collecting possessions, but I also have a concern that is there a process that we can actually use to determine ownership to know that this isn't actually stolen stuff? I, I mean, I wouldn't want somebody who had their property stolen and then it was at an encampment, and then that encampment was then abated and that property was then shelved and not to the rightful owner. So what, I think that this is a lot harder to put into practice than in theory. I think the theory of it's good, but the practice makes it pretty tough and maybe unworkable.
Who's that?
Coombs.
Oh, Councilmember Coombs, sorry.
I mean, it seems to me that we can establish some type of process, right? We can sort out from it anything that's, you know, infested or contraband and just direct staff to establish a process. You know, whether that process is perfect, I don't think is the, the real meaningful question here. It's that we are actually directing staff to establish a process that can work for the folks who would otherwise lose their items altogether. And as we heard from folks testifying, that that has really severe negative consequences for their ability to get housed and to no longer be in the situation of unsheltered homelessness.
Council, oh, Councilmember Maria?
Thank you. Okay. So it sounds like there is, like, in theory, support for the concept, so I can work on the language since we will have to vote on this a second time and see if we can come to an agreement there. City Attorney Joyce outlined a process that Denver uses. I'm interested in looking at that a little bit further to see if we can mirror process, but hopefully some amended language will help the, the conversation and, and support at the, at the next council meeting. So I will, I guess, retract my amendment now and we'll bring that up for next time.
Okay. I think that's a good idea. I think you do have most of us that would like to support this idea, so we'll look forward to bringing it back with, with some more language. And she has one more amendment.
Sorry, point of order.
Councilmember Coombs?
Question for the city attorney. I know in the past, there's been a question of whether something constitutes a substantive change, and if that requires an additional reading of an ordinance. If Councilmember Murillo were to bring a more detailed change of this nature for the next meeting, would that then require a third reading? Or could we pass it now and then get the details by the next meeting?
No, this will be, this would be a substantive amendment, so you would need another reading. And, and you're, you're going to need a financial impact on this as well. And since the financial impact could be so long, that's why it's a substantive amendment.
Mayor?
Mayor Protam, I think this is a important issue, and there may be other issues. So I started back.
You're, you're okay with this having a third reading? Are we, is everybody, are you okay with that, Councilmember Maria? Okay. And then you have a third amendment you'd like to present?
Yeah, if we could bring the, the page back up, that would be great. Okay, so, okay, so another issue that I have with this ordinance is kind of the adding section 11. So essentially, this would be in effect in perpetuity. I think my, my proposal is to have a sunset on this, this ordinance and to have an annual report evaluating the effectiveness of this ordinance at, at said time. I think if we're talking about real, like, real solutions solving city problems, I think that we, we really need something to this effect. We need a, a time certain of when we'll, we'll come back and reevaluate this and to, to have our city staff report on what, what has happened as a result of the abatement. And I outlined some areas that I thought might be, I, I would want to know more if I'm evaluating the effectiveness of camping abatement ordinance. So at a minimum, yeah, so I would like, I guess we, I should make the motion, I'd like to move to add section 11 to the proposed ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So we have the motion by Councilmember Maria, second by Councilmember Medina. Mayor?
Thank you. Mayor Protam, I, I. Thank you, Mayor Protam. I would, I, I accept the, all but the first sentence with one-year sunset. I don't accept. The language in terms of transparency, accountability, I do accept. So, but I, but if that first sentence is there, I'll certainly oppose the entire amendment.
Well, it, can we put it back on the screen? It disappeared.
So while that, do you mind if I just?
Go ahead, Councilmember Maria.
Okay. So it, it reads, this ordinance shall be in effect until one year from start date. And that would trigger the review, and then city council can vote to reaffirm the, the camping ban ordinance if indeed it is solving these, these issues that we are interested in solving. So that, that's my intent there.
I'm sure.
Council, or Mayor?
I mean, Mayor Protam. At any time, at any time, the council can vote to repeal, and they don't have to wait a year to do so. If there are six members that, that wish to do so, they can do that at any time.
Any other discussion?
Mayor Protam?
Councilmember Markana?
Thank you, ma'am. So we have actually used this a few times since I've been on council. I think the most recent time we used it was with the vehicular nuisance ordinance that several of us had some hangups with, but agreed that something needed to be done. So I think it's a good faith effort to support this kind of amendment. It doesn't mean that the ordinance will die after a year, because if it's actually working and doing what, you know, folks have promised it would do, then it would make sense to renew it. So I don't understand what, the hesitancy to include this in the ordinance. We've done it before. I think it's a good way to demonstrate that even though folks are not in complete agreement or even not in much agreement at all, that it's worthy of demonstrating the efficacy of the policy, especially given how much consternation and discussion we've had on this issue.
City Attorney? I think on the vehicular nuisance ordinance, it was, I think it goes in, it, it's in effect, but it can be evaluated in a year. Do you remember the language on that? Because it wasn't, it had to be, you know, re-voted on.
So, so this is written as a sunset, meaning it goes away?
Right.
You can write it as review in a year. I, I think that's, I think that's the two different points that we're looking at.
So Councilmember Maria, would you be amenable to having it not be a sunset, but having it reviewed?
I mean, I, I think if, why would we continue a ordinance that isn't effective? Is kind of my question.
Right. So it would, it would be reviewed. If it wasn't effective, then it would go away, right? I mean, that's my understanding. No? Okay. Mayor?
So I'd prefer to include the, the start date, but if others are not okay with that language, then I guess we can strike that, but I'd like to keep that.
Okay. Mayor?
Yeah, Mayor Protam, and it would automatically go away, the way it's written. A review, it would not, and, but if you take out the first sentence, then it is a review. After a year, then you'll have the, the information and should, and it would not automatically go away unless there were six votes to have it go away.
Mayor, I mean, Mayor Protam?
Yes, Councilmember Lawson?
Couldn't a, the city attorney, if, couldn't a council member, of course, bring up in a year or whatever they, timeframe they see fit, to bring up another ordinance if they see that this is not working?
Absolutely.
Is that correct?
Yes.
With some of the gaps? With some of the gaps that maybe it's not working?
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Gardner.
Yeah, that's my concern is how this is written. Essentially, so the first sentence, the ordinance should be in effect until one year from the start date. If that's the case, then after one year, it goes away and makes the rest of it a moot point. There would be no reason to have an annual report and a review, because it's written as if the ordinance would just go away. And so I think the only way to, to make the annual report worthwhile, worth our time, is to have it to where it's a review after one year, which is essentially what's described in, in the, you know, following two or three sentences.
Councilmember Murillo.
Yeah, I'm hearing some opposition to that first sentence. I, I think that's a fair point, Councilmember Gardner. I, I do think that we should have language around a date certain to evaluate the effectiveness, and if it's not effective, then it should be structured as such that it would end, hence the, the sunset, that, the beginning sentence of this. But I hear your point around kind of the order of operations. So, oh, Councilmember Markano, was that you?
That was. I apologize. I thought you were done.
I think she was still talking.
Did you want to add something? Because, yeah, did you want to add something?
If I, Mayor Protem?
Go ahead, Councilmember Markano.
Thank you. So I know that we used language for the, what I refer to as the car smokers' ordinance that was passed before, I think it was passed in 2018, and it was one of the first, I think it might have actually been our first meeting in 2019, that it came back up for review. And the way it was written, it required someone to move and second to keep it in effect. And when we got the review information that was, that was discussed, both in the backup and then I think briefly before the vote took place, it died for lack of emotion, because it was completely ineffective. So Councilmember Murillo, is that kind of what you were trying to shoot for here? Or you, you would just need to move and second to keep it in motion?
Yeah, that could be, yeah, a legitimate way to address the, the points that I listed. Councilmember Markano.
Mayor Protem?
Oh, Mayor, sorry.
I'd offer an amendment to strike the first sentence. This is, an amendment, well, this is amendment to the amendment.
Okay.
All right.
I'll, I'll second.
Second, okay.
Okay, Councilmember Murillo has seconded that.
No, you didn't.
Oh, I am. Okay.
Well, I moved it, so.
Okay, so.
So we vote on, if I understand this procedurally, we vote on my amendment and then we vote on the Murillo amendment, correct?
So you're, you're voting on striking the first sentence?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're voting, Katie, do you get that? We're voting on striking the first sentence as a substitute motion or amendment?
Yes, we are adding that verbiage, and we're about to open the vote.
Thank you.
Okay, so the vote has been opened to strike the first sentence of Councilmember Murillo's third amendment. The motion passes with six yes votes and four no votes, four no votes from Councilmember Coombs, Councilmember Markano, Councilmember Medina, and Councilmember Murillo.
Okay, and?
Now it's back to the Murillo.
You're, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, so we need, do, we already had a motion, or did we?
If we don't have a motion, I'd like to move to.
I think, I think you did, and then?
Yeah.
We had a second with Medina?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so now we're voting on the original.
As amended.
Yeah, as amended.
Back to discussion.
We're, we're voting on Councilmember Murillo's motion on this third one, but without that first sentence. Oh, it disappeared.
We have to remove that first sentence for you guys.
Okay, thank you.
That's the one.
Okay, now is open to voting.
Eescribe's just not working for me right now, but I support the amendment that I proposed.
The motion passes unanimously to approve Councilmember Murillo's amendment.
Okay, thank you. Are we back on 14A now?
Is there, are there further?
Are there any further amendments? Okay.
Mayor Protem?
Oh, Councilmember Markano.
Thank you. I do not have an amendment, but I do want to just say some, give some comments on the overall ordinance, if I may. All right, so we've had a lot of discussion tonight on, you know, ways to, I guess, put a little bit of lipstick on the pig, but the issue that sticks out to me still is that this entire ordinance, this entire exercise is built on a foundation of lies and utter BS. We've been misrepresenting what this does to our community, from elected officials, from candidates for office, from local media, all over the place. So I want to apologize, because I respect the people of Aurora too much to lie to you, to try to earn your vote, to try to, you know, promise you that this is going to actually make any kind of meaningful change in your day to day. So here's what's going to happen when this passes, because I'm pretty sure the votes are there. And I'll just tell you what has been happening. On I-225 in Mississippi, there was a camp next to Best Buy. That camp got abated. Those people moved over to Abilene, literally started setting up camp on the sidewalk. That camp got abated. Those people moved down to West Tallgate Creek, behind folks' neighborhoods over off of Laredo. That camp got abated. Those folks moved down to Isleiff, made their way up Isleiff, set up at Isleiff and 225. That camp got abated. Those folks moved into Heather Ridge. That camp got abated. Those folks moved into the Jewel Wetlands. That camp got abated. Those folks ended up back, you guessed it, at Mississippi and 225. Because what we're doing is just, like I said before, setting money on fire, accomplishing absolutely nothing, fulfilling campaign pavilion that doesn't address the root causes of why we have this problem. So my last-ditch effort here is to introduce a motion to table this indefinitely, because it does not and will not do a damn thing to improve the quality of life for our residents. It is as cruel and inhumane as you can get. It does not change materially the living conditions for folks in our city, housed and unhoused alike. And what I would like to instead have us do is open up our piggy bank. We are a very well financial, very well-run, financially stable city, and invest heavily and aggressively in permanent supportive housing. We know that that is the solution to homelessness, whether it's done at a small scale like Denver did. They were able to house nearly as many folks as we have estimated on housing Aurora in a short span of time. Whether it's done like Helsinki did, where they have, over the last decade, eliminated chronic homelessness in their city, or whether it's being done successfully in Houston as we speak, where they have more than halved their chronically unhoused population, and see a point in time in the near future where they will have zero effective homelessness, because they've invested in housing first. Camping bans don't work. The people who continue to sell you they do are lying to you, taking advantage of your trust and good faith for their own personal benefit and for the benefit of their donors. It is pure politics. It's disgusting. It's despicable, and you all deserve better. So what I would like us to do is table this indefinitely, put this foolishness aside, and deliver a real solution for the people of our city.
Second to table this.
Second.
Okay, we have a second for Councilmember Coombs' discussion. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I urge a no vote, and look forward to bringing a resolution forward soon to discuss the appropriate conduct for members of this council.
Okay, thank you. And I, I will just say that, you know, the, the, when you talked about the camps moving once they're abated, we didn't have a camping ban ordinance, and this camping ban ordinance is to require that we have shelter for them. So I would hope that rather than moving people, you know, over and over, that we will be able to help some individuals that, that do need assistance. And, and I know, you know, everyone keeps saying that we, we're not doing anything. We spent $4.1 million just, just recently on homeless services, you know, with, with Second Chance, with Bridge House, with Salvation Army, with Restoration Church, Day Resource Center, Comitus. We, I, I just want the public to know that it's not like we don't do anything for our homeless, because we do a lot and we have done a lot. And we've used CARES money, we've used ARPA money, we use marijuana money, and then CBGG monies and S, ESG monies. So there's a lot of resources, and then I think we're looking at having more resources to come. So any further discussion on tabling, or should we move to the vote?
Mayor Protem?
Councilmember Coombs, then Councilmember Markano.
Yeah, so I just want to point out that we certainly have some programs and some funding, but we also took $10 million out of what we were originally proposed in ARPA funds to put toward shelter solutions and are now discussing even not necessarily using the $5 million we did set aside. So we do some, but we have not, in fact, done all that we can do. We also gave half a solution on the pallet shelters. So I want to be clear that we are not doing everything we can do.
Call for the question.
We have, the mayor is asking for call for the vote. Is there a second?
Needs a second.
Second.
Can we have a second, Katie? And we are voting on the call for the vote.
City Attorney, I'm sorry, can I ask a?
Oh.
Procedural question.
Wait, did we vote on, on, on the table?
We have not voted on the table yet.
Okay, we need to vote, I'm sorry, on the Markano motion to table.
Okay, the vote is now open.
Okay, so everyone, this is to table.
This is to table the ordinance indefinitely.
Dan, I'm sorry, just to clarify, do we need to vote on the tabling indefinitely first, or Mayor's secondary motion to call the question?
Oh, we're voting on the tabling first?
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
Okay.
That's what I, that's what I thought. I think that, is that what we just?
We need to recall the, redo the question then, because it was.
It was wrong.
We are voting on tabling indefinitely, is that correct? Yes, that's what we're voting on. Councilmembers Avonik, we only need your vote. Okay, the motion does not pass with four yes votes, six no votes, with. Councilmember Medina, Councilmember Markano, Councilmember Coombs, and Councilmember Murillo with yes votes. Oh.
Now we'll deal with calling the question.
Well, that was actually kind of backwards, actually.
That was the vote on the call for the question.
Oh, on the tabling?
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry.
So now it's the vote on the tabling, motion to table.
Oh, my God. Okay, we are now, it's very confusing.
You, you voted on the tabling. You voted on the table.
That's what was on the screen, right.
Yeah, you voted on the tabling, so you're back to.
Did we vote on call for the question?
No.
Okay, well, you have to vote on call for the question first.
Yes.
Just.
We had, we had two votes.
Yeah, just go back, and, and we're now to the original motion as amended.
Mayor Protem?
Councilmember Markano.
All right, thank you, ma'am. I just want to suggest that maybe we should stop abusing call the question and let folks actually have conversations, because I did want to add that, you're right, we do provide homeless services, but they're very, they're part of what I like to call the patchwork of services that we provide. None of these are actually a solution in and of themselves. And part of the success of the Housing First model of Houston, Helsinki, and even Denver, is that those programs don't rely on that. They basically consolidate that, get folks housed, and then connect them with services after the fact. And that's why they're so effective and, you know, able to actually address the problem, as opposed to doing what we do, where, you know, we're helping folks literally not die, which I do not want to devalue, but at the same time, we're pushing them around our city through our, what I call our soft camping ban, our status quo, which this ordinance just enshrines. So it's important that we tell the whole truth there. Yes, we do do some things, but we don't go anywhere near to the level of permanent supportive housing, and that actually is demonstrated to work. None of the other stuff that we're doing works, and those are just the facts.
Okay, thank you. We are now moving on to 14A, so we have a motion?
Well, there was already, there's.
Was there, was there a motion and a second on 14A?
There was a motion in the beginning by Mayor Kaufman and Councilmembers Avonik.
Okay.
That was the first motion and second made.
Okay. Discussion.
Mayor Protem?
Councilmember Murillo.
Thank you, and I appreciate you all entertaining the amendments. That was, again, me trying to address issues that are, I think, structurally flawed out of this ordinance. I think, again, it's, it's been made abundantly clear that we only need to offer shelter, not actually have the number of shelter beds. So I, I remain that I don't agree that we're, that like, the timing of this ordinance is just, is, is suspect at best, but it, it has issues, because we don't even have enough shelter beds if we're really, truly trying to house all of our neighbors and community members. I've said that already. Another issue that I have with the timing of this ordinance is around the fact that we haven't actually explored staffing time. So what I mean is, in our, in the first iteration, you know, several months ago, when the mayor brought this to a discussion, I asked our staff what one of the issues were, what the issues were in, in trying to process these abatement requests. The issue is that in 2021, we had three times the amount of, just in volume, of, of complaints to, for the city to abate different homeless encampments. So the issue was that, though we had such a big increase in complaints and, you know, calls for service in that regard, we didn't have three times the staff. So we were experiencing a bottleneck. That was incorporated, the city manager incorporated that into our last budget. They were hired at the beginning of this year. So it is now February, you know, end of February. This person has only had a couple of months to do their work. So we'll never know, we won't be able to figure out the effectiveness of that position. So I, I think, again, it's premature for that reason, as well as not having, actually having enough beds to shelter folks. I think that in terms of it being costly and inefficient, we're going to be opening ourselves up to legal liability lawsuits for the way it's written. Our police department, we've heard many times that we are understaffed, and there are more, you know, calls that our police department would like to prioritize over sweeping folks. So when we think about what our priorities are, we're going to be diverting very expensive police department staff away from addressing major crimes, violent crimes, youth violence. We, we've talked about this in this meeting, away from that to move them. And we know that it's not actually going to solve anything. We're just moving people. So I, I'm opposed, because we're not even using our staff resources effectively. We haven't seen that full-time staff efficiency. We're going to be misusing police department resources. I bet our, I believe our housing department would need to hire another full-time staff to be able to manage the implementation of this as well. And then, you know, let alone, we, we know the, the numbers in terms of Denver's camping ban. They, they have a camping ban. It's not exactly effective, and they spend millions of dollars annually to abate their, their camps. And I would much rather that, those dollars be invested in proactive solutions as opposed to reactive solutions. to reactive solutions. So we should be focusing on funding the housing plan. We have the first-ever strategic housing plan for the City of Aurora that was implemented December 2020. So that also hasn't been in effect long enough for us to actually have tangible solutions. We should be, we have a great plan, best practices, vetted by, you know, other, what other cities have done. We should be funding that, we should be proactively pursuing those solutions to be able to maintain and increase our affordable housing stock. So we're already doing some of these things, right? We, actually, we are doing these things, we are trying to proactively do that, we're just not resourcing those areas. We could be using the American Rescue Plan Act instead, the dollars, the federal dollars, the federal ARPA dollars, to, again, fund some of these solutions. There's, I believe, $5 million that we have allocated towards a housing solution, and then another $5 million reserve that we have yet to determine what to do. There's a proposal and discussions that our staff have had to create a homeless campus, or a housing campus on the Anshitz Medical Campus where our current Day Resource Center is at, in partnership with other community members. Why aren't we doing that, right? Like, that's a solution, those are partners, the campus could help support, step up to support this community. Those are all things, I would much rather spend those millions of dollars that we are potentially going to be liable for by enforcing this, you know, as opposed to being reactive. So I think we should be proactive in funding the things we are currently doing, instead of passing meaningless resolutions that have no teeth, and that we know the language here doesn't align with the narrative and rhetoric that we've heard around being compassionate, because this is not in any way, shape, or form compassionate. That's all.
I know we're still going to vote on 14A, and I don't want to cut off discussion, but I do want to remind everyone, it is 11:36, we do have a lot of staff here. So, you know, if you're going, I just would urge you to let us go ahead and vote on 14A. We still have to get through 11A and then the other items on the agenda.
Can I just say something on this?
Sure, Councilmember Lawson.
The problem I have with this is that, within the 72-hour notice, and I think that what's going to have to happen, because this probably will pass, is that you need to, the mayor or communications or something needs to let the people know that along 225, that is organized by CDOT, so they have a different policy. When you get into where I live at, where it's the Terry Creek Park, that's a whole different situation that we haven't even discussed. I mean, kind of what I have an issue with is, we knew that this was coming up last year, I think that there should have been some conversations with the state, because that part is not going to be abated at all, and those individuals will probably go into that area. So I just think, I wish there was some language in here, because a 72-hour notice may be, may be something that you're going to do within the city, but we still have to look at those other areas that we're not, that are not jurisdictional with the City of Aurora. So I think when people call us, you have to understand that CDOT, along 225, that's CDOT, we have a seven, we have an IGA with them, that's seven days. Along where the State Park is, we haven't even had a conversation. So you're going to see people there, you're going to see individuals unhoused there, until we maybe can work something out. So I just wanted to put that out there, because that's not really, has been discussed, and I think that that's going to have to be a reality, as when you call council members and say they're over there, that we don't have, you have, the 72 hours may not be realistic in some parts.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a lot of thoughts on this. You know, I really appreciate all the commenters tonight that came in, both, I guess, in person and on the phone. I think it was disappointing to me that some folks used it an opportunity to dunk on the police department again. That's old and tired. You know, we really need to focus on what the issues are as it relates to this policy. And I think, you know, it's important that we focus on that as we have this debate. We need to do this, it's one tool in the tool belt. This will not solve all of our issues with homelessness in Aurora. If it did, it would have solved it in Denver as well. However, I think it is one tool in the tool belt that we can use, because our current status quo is not working. I've had responsibility before for a business location that had an encampment on it, where the police had to respond eight different times because they couldn't serve a trespass notice, because we did not have a policy like this in place. That is not acceptable. Further, our first responders are already going to these locations, and they're encountering things like needles, human feces, booby traps, a whole variety of things. In another jurisdiction, there was a firefighter that has a broken leg from falling into a hole trying to protect a homeless encampment. This is a public health issue, this is a sanitation issue, not only for the residents in the rest of our city, but also for the residents that are living in these homeless encampments. You know, so I appreciate what Councilmember Lawson said, I think it's going to be important as we communicate this to the community that we level set what this is going to look like, what it's going to solve, what it's not going to solve, what it's going to address, what it's not going to address, so that that way there's realistic expectations. But in general, I think this is an important tool for us to have, so I will be voting to support it.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Marcano.
Thank you, ma'am. I just think it bears repeating that this is quite literally what we're already doing, and it hasn't done anything. So why would we enshrine this in our code and actually remove flexibility from staff when it's been unsuccessful as public policy for the last several years already? So it just, it beggars belief that we're trying to like, to start, you know, do a logic pretzel here, I guess. This is a waste of time and money, and I, again, strongly urge a no vote and urge you all to support permanent supportive housing.
And I'll just make a statement that I think it's important to look at the majority of our residents in our city, and we've received, at least I have, emails, phone calls, I've seen social media posts from residents that live in my ward and throughout the city that are very concerned about the encampments and the safety of those encampments. And so, you know, if you want to say, you've heard from people, well, I've heard from people that want us to do something, probably 80% of this entire Aurora population wants us to do a camp, a camp, an encampment ban. And so, you know, I'm listening to my residents, and that is my duty to make sure that they're represented as well. And, you know, you mentioned Houston earlier, they do have a camping ban, and I know that they have done really great things to help homelessness and to come up with solutions. And I think this is, this is being responsible to those residents and businesses that are crying out to us to do something while we currently have services, and we can look for more opportunities to, you know, to help our homeless, whether they have addiction problems and we need to get them into rehabilitation, or, you know, we have people that have mental illness that we can, you know, we're funding Aurora Mental Health Campus, and if we can get them resources there. There's a lot of things, I think, that we all agree, you know, whether, what side of the aisle you're on, I think we all do have compassion, we do want to help people, we might have different ways of getting at a solution, but I think this is, this is something that we have to do. Other discussion before we vote?
Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Jurenski.
One comment that I would just like to make is that currently, the homeless issue, I feel, mostly falls on the backs of business owners in Aurora. You know, I've witnessed firsthand, you know, they come in and they need, you know, they need, they need things, toilet paper, soap, paper towels, these are things that they need, and they are being taken out of small businesses. I'm not saying we need to deny them of these things, I'm saying we need to offer alternatives than this being on the backs of the small business owners in Aurora right now, because that's exactly where this lies right now.
Further discussion?
Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Avonik.
Yeah, earlier, Councilmember Marcano talked about the need for us to be honest with our constituents, and he's absolutely right. And when we talk about the root causes of homelessness, we have to be honest that when it comes to addiction and mental health issues, that the city in and of itself isn't equipped to deal with those issues on our own. We have to rely on the state and county governments to help us with those areas. The one thing that the city should be responsible for, the top priority of any local government should be public safety. And there is just no question that these encampments, being on the sides of our highways or just beyond fence lines in our neighborhoods or next to our businesses, these are serious public health and safety issues for our residents and for those in the encampments. And this proposal is the one step that we can take as a local government to start to push some of those people who are in encampments, who've disassociated from society and from support into a shelter situation where they can get that. So I'm in support of this, and I'm thankful that we're finally doing something, because the status quo has failed us, and we deserve, and our residents and those in the encampments deserve better.
Okay, thank you. Can we go ahead and?
Mayor Protem, sorry, I have a question for staff.
Yes, go ahead.
So my question is, we know that we have a budget for clearing encampments that we budgeted for. Should this ordinance require more costs, like, cost more than we have budgeted? What do we do to cover the budget gap between what we've budgeted and what we would need to enforce this?
Well, there's always an opportunity to come to the spring workshop with supplemental budget.
I'm aware of that, but I just, I wanted to see if staff had any thoughts that they had put into this already, since it's likely to be more costly than what we've already been doing.
Sure, Councilmember Coombs. So we currently have a budget for this in the 2022 budget, we're tracking it closely, working across the departments and with our contractor that does abatement. And so if we get to a point where we're getting close to overspend that, we will bring it back for a supplemental, you know, either in the spring, or we would have to address it as part of a budget request for 2023.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then I did just want to also point out that one of the other primary responsibilities of local government is land use and housing. And so to say that public safety is the only area that we have levers of control, I think, is inaccurate and incomplete. And so we could be doing things to house people, not just shelter them.
All right. And I do want to make a comment that Councilmember Avonik talked about, but, you know, public safety is the number-one priority for citizens in the City of Aurora, that consistently say that over and over. We're, just for the public, we're not a county, we are only a city, so our revenues do only come from sales and use tax primarily, 10% from property taxes. So when we talk about social services, we have to remember that we need partners from Adams County, Arapahoe County, and Douglas County to assist us. It should not, that we should not really have the entire burden on our shoulders, that they really need to also step up to the plate and help us. Further discussion? Otherwise, we'll go ahead and vote on 14A with the amendment that passed with Councilmember Mario's third amendment.
And mayor, we do have a tie vote, so you can vote to make, I mean, to break the tie.
To, to the passage of item number 14A, the mayor vote time.
The motion passes with six yes votes, five no votes. No votes from Councilmember Medina, Councilmember Marcano, Councilmember Coombs, Councilmember Lawson.
Order! We pay you to serve us!
You are being very disrespectful.
Six hours! Six hours! Six hours!
Stop!
We pay you, don't forget that! And we're going to be back here, you're going to see us marching in the streets!
You need to leave.
You need to listen to us!
You need to stop!
You take our money, and then you screw us!
We are taking a recess.
That's not democracy! That's not democracy!
We're to have sufficient shelter options for individual.
I move item number 11A.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion?
Item number 11A is, item number 11A is a companion to ordinance 14A, proposed order that's 14A, and it directs the city manager to, to provide, to search, provide, and maintain appropriate shelter options for those individuals from the encampments that are abated.
Mayor Protam? Yes. Councilmember Mario?
So, question for our city attorney. How does this differ than what we're already doing?
Are you asking, who are you?
City attorney. How would this resolution change what our current processes are? Because my understanding is that the city manager and our staff are already implementing our housing strategy, which includes maintaining affordable housing.
I don't know how it relates exactly to the housing strategy. We.
Wait, I wasn't done explaining, though. And that's not the point. The point is that we're already doing work that is expanding our housing options, including our shelter options. So how does this differ?
The shelter options, we have a need to have a shelter option to abate a camp. So we need more options available so that we can continue to abate camps and provide services to those people that need assistance to get out, if they are homeless, to get out of their cycle of homelessness.
Aren't we already doing that with our housing strategy? Is pursuing shelter options? We've had a couple of recent requests.
No, I don't believe what's, we're searching for with housing strategy, I think that's permanent housing, where the shelter option is temporary service, temporary housing providing services.
Are you sure on that? Thank you, Jessica. I just want clarity. I mean, this feels like a redundant resolution when I, I was under the impression that we were already pursuing options to shelter our unhoused.
Councilmember Mario, sorry, I got up, I forgot about the resolution, I apologize. So, we have through COVID been looking at temporary shelter options and utilizing COVID dollars. So what I would suggest with this is staff would bring back a list of shelter options to the March 21 study session wherein we can look at the cost per bed, we can look at timeline to implementation, we can look at more temporary options, more long-term permanent solutions related to what different sheltering options would look like. So that's what the resolution for me would be directing, is directing staff to come back to council with, you know, a matrix of options to be considered.
And just for clarification, so I thought we were already having that conversation because we had $5 million allocated in ARPA dollars for like a homeless shelter facility. So I thought we were already going to have that conversation.
Yes, that conversation is currently happening, and that could be one of the options on the list of different solutions, understanding that a new shelter facility or a rehab of a building for a shelter facility is going to be a longer timeline than the implementation of the ordinance.
And, okay. I just, I feel like my question is answered. We're already pursuing these types of options regardless of this resolution, as was just outlined by our staff.
And I was just gonna say, oftentimes, council members do resolutions that just direct staff. So, you know, this is not a new situation. We do this quite a bit, and it's just to put basically, you know, in writing that we are asking for shelter alternatives and to come forward to us at a different date. On the $5 million, I believe that was set aside, and what I understand it, it could be not necessarily just for the one proposal that was brought forward at the workshop, but it could be for other homeless ideas, correct?
Yeah, it's very broadly stated as, you know, a homeless emergency shelter is actually how it's stated broadly.
Thank you. Other discussion?
Can I just ask a question? So Jessica, I just have a question for you. So this, obviously, I didn't support the camping ban, but I'm gonna support this because we do need, now we do need shelter options. So realistically, can you tell me approximately how many we have now? And when this becomes effective law in 30 days, which I'm sure it does, how many more opportunity, or shelters can we have, do you think, as we're starting to move forward on this? Because we will need some. So can you just give me like an approximate? I know you're coming back to the study session, but I think that's an important question.
Yeah, so we currently have about 200, 250 without it being cold weather, depending on how people are doubled up. So that's kind of our current capacity. And I don't know that we can produce a whole lot of new options within 30 days of when exactly the ordinance is implemented. However, we can again come back with some realistic timelines for what it would take to implement additional beds, you know, fairly quickly. So.
So then can I ask the attorney something? If a person is offered, they don't, they're offered, they're, we say that we were supposed to offer them a shelter place, correct? And then they go, and then their place is not offered, then can that person come back and do any kind of complaint against the city, sue the city? If they're not, if we're saying that we're offering them a shelter space or space somewhere in one of our safe places, and they go and they're, they go there and they're not offered one because they did accept that they would go, do they have, could they file a complaint against the city? Can they sue the city? Can there be something against the city?
I don't see a cause of action for them to sue the city, no.
Okay.
They're voluntarily going, we are not forcing them to go. So I see no cause of action for them at all.
But if there's no option, and we said that there could be an option?
If there is no option available, we do not abate the camp. We do not move those people.
Okay. Further discussion?
Mayor Protam?
Yes, Councilmember Coombs.
So, my question is, I guess I just want to make sure we're very clear about what we're doing here. Because the concern I have is that what we end up doing here is creating a minimal amount of shelter for the purposes of being able to abate more camps, and not for the purposes of really addressing this issue. So I just want to clarify, Jessica, when you're bringing what you're bringing back to council, are you also gonna be bringing back funding requests adequate to meet the full need? Or is it gonna be just within the funding that we already have, this is what we can do?
So, we will bring back a list of options with associated costs. And so if council provides direction on which shelter options they would like staff to further pursue, then that would generate a funding request in some way back to council. But even once council decides which option they'd like to pursue, we probably would need to refine the costs and get some more information back to be able to make that funding request.
All right, thank you.
Further discussion, or shall we vote on the resolution? It's just a resolution.
Yes, it is, Mayor Protam.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Jessica, my question for, I guess more of a comment really for you, is when we're looking at a plan, I would like to see a permanent supportive housing plan with costs and opportunities for partnerships with the county and the state come as a result of this resolution. I don't think that we, you know, need to be just trying to achieve the bare minimum to, you know, justify moving people along our city indefinitely. Because what I want to make clear for the folks who are still listening is that we are currently embarking on the path to becoming Seattle or Los Angeles or another one of those big cities with camping bans and a huge homeless problem. Because none of them have ever actually committed the resources to solving the problem. I don't want us to repeat those exact same footsteps. So if, so again, permanent supportive housing seems to do the trick, wherever it's implemented at the right scale, I want us to have that success as well. So please, please include that in what you're bringing to us with the resolution. I think that's really, really imperative. I think that'd be great for us to see.
Further discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Katie, on 11A.
Councilmember Coombs?
No, where's mine? The wooden one?
Yes. Sorry, I was, I mean, East Scrabble issue.
Okay, the motion passes with nine yes votes, one no vote from Councilmember Mario.
Okay. I am now turning the meeting back over to the mayor.
Finalizing ordinances, I understand that item 15A, 15F, and 15G passed unanimously during first reading and may be taken under consideration and voted upon as a single item. So it's similar procedurally to a consent calendar. So I don't believe that Katie has to read the titled issue for these. So the question before us is the adoption of item 15A, 15B, and 15, it's, I'm sorry, 15A, 15F, and 15G. Motion?
Mayor?
Mayor Protam?
Motion to approve 15A, 15F, and 15G.
It's been moved by Mayor Protam, seconded by?
Zivonic.
Seconded by Councilmember Zivonic to approve item number 15A, 15F, and 15G. A discussion? Seeing no discussion, call for the question.
The vote has been open. The motion passes with nine yes votes, no one vote from Councilmember Marcano to approve ordinances 15A, 15F, and 15G.
Clerk, now please read title to item number.
Clerk, I'm sorry, mayor. I misclicked, that's my fault.
Clerk, now please read the title to item number 15B.
Councilmember Marcano, we put you as a yes, so it passed unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item 15B is ordinance 202205, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Aurora, Colorado, approving the amended and restated service plan for ATEC Metropolitan Districts Number One and Two, and authorizing the execution of an IGA between the city of Aurora, Colorado and the districts.
Brief presentation by staff.
Yeah, good evening. We have an amended and restated service plan for the ATAC Metropolitan Districts Number One and Two. This district, along with Aurora Highlands Numbers One to Five, First Creek Ranch, and the AACMD District, will serve the Aurora Highlands Development with a combined total residence of 41,823. This proposed service plan does not follow the city's model.
Questions of staff? I see none, motion is in order.
Motion to approve 15B.
It's been moved by Mayor Protam Bergen, seconded by Councilmember Lawson to approve item number 15B. Discussion? I see none, with clerk, please call, well, call the question out of item 15B.
The vote has been open. Councilmember Coombs, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Coombs?
Councilmember Coombs had to log off.
Okay. Council, she said yes. Okay, the motion passes with eight votes and in the affirmative, one no from Councilmember Marcano.
Clerk, now please read the title to item, item number 15C.
Item 15C is ordinance 202206, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Aurora, Colorado, accepting designation as the approving authority for the First Creek Ranch Metropolitan District, approving the consolidated second amended and restated service plan for the Aurora Highlands Metropolitan Districts Numbers One through Five, and First Creek Ranch Metropolitan District, to be known as the Aurora Highlands Metro District Number Six, and authorizing the execution of an IGA between the city of Aurora, Colorado and the districts.
Brief presentation by staff.
This service plan is similar to the previous. It is also working with the ATAC Metropolitan Districts and the Aratropolis Area Coordinating Metropolitan District to serve the Aurora Highlands Development with approximately 41,823 residents. The service plan is also not in compliance with the city's model.
Questions of staff? Seeing none, motion is in order.
Mayor?
It's been moved by Mayor, Mayor Protam Bergen, seconded by?
Sundberg.
Seconded by Councilmember Sundberg to approve item number 15C. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, the question before us is the adoption of item number 15C. Call for the question.
The vote has been open. The motion passes with seven yes votes, two no votes from Councilmember Medina and Councilmember Marcano.
Clerk, now please read the title to item number 15D.
Item 15D is ordinance 202207, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Aurora, Colorado, approving the second amended and restated service plan for Aratropolis Area Coordinating Metro District, and authorizing the execution of an IGA between the city of Aurora, Colorado and the district.
Brief presentation by staff.
The Aratropolis Coordinating Metropolitan District also works in conjunction with the Aurora Highlands District, as well as the AACMD District, and is also serving the Aurora Highlands Development with 41,823 residents. The service plan is also not in compliance with the city's model.
Questions of staff? I see none, motion is in order.
Mayor, approved to move along 15D?
Sorry, who is?
Motion.
Oh, moved by Councilmember Sundberg, seconded by?
Jurinsky.
Councilmember Jurinsky to approve item number, what are we on, 15E? Discussion? I see no, no discussion. The question before us is the adoption of item number 15E. Call for the question.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I believe we're on item 15D, ordinance 2022.
15D, that's 15D.
Okay.
The question before us is the adoption of item number 15D, call for the question.
The motion passes with eight yes votes, one no vote from Councilmember Marcano.
Question before us is the adoption of item number 15E. With clerk, please read the title to item number 15E.
Ordnance 202208, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Aurora, Colorado, amending sections 2-2 of the city code pertaining to legal holidays.
Mayor?
Brief presentation by staff.
Mayor, oh, no, I don't want a presentation, mayor.
Mayor Protam?
It's late, we've seen it. I'm making a substitute motion that we reinstate the day after Thanksgiving holiday and then allow employees to use a personal day.
Is it a substitute motion?
It's a substitute motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Is, seconded by?
Zivonic.
Mayor, can I just clarify one thing? When we say use a personal day, so they were having three personal days to two personal days.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sorry, that's how I, that's what I meant.
Okay, discussion?
And I, can I, I just want to make a comment?
Please.
That I have heard from some of the employees of the city, and that that seemed to be the preference, so I just wanted to state that.
Further discussion? Seeing none, the question before us is the adoption of item number 15E. Call for the question.
The motion passes with eight yes votes, one no vote from Councilmember Mario.
With clerk, please read the title to item number 17A.
Item 17A is Resolution 202252, a resolution of the city council of the city of Aurora, Colorado, finding a petition for annexation of a certain parcel of land located in the west half of Section 30, Township Three South, Range 65 West, and east half of Section 25, Township Three South, Range 66 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian, County of Adams, State of Colorado, to be in substantial compliance with Section 31121071 CRS, and giving notice of a public hearing on proposed annexation, 6.097 acres.
Brief presentation by staff.
Apologies, I had to thank someone for coming. All right. Good evening. The item before you is a resolution finding a petition for annexation and substantial compliance for a parcel located within the Aurora Highlands Development. This parcel is six acres located generally northeast of 26th Avenue and E470 along Gun Club Road right of way. The proposed resolution finds that the proposed annexation meets substantial compliance with state statute and provides a notice of public hearing on this annexation. The parcel falls within the city's annexation boundary and meets contingency requirements. This will be incorporated into the existing Aurora Highlands master plan and is being pursued to accommodate a future hospital site. There will be an associated right-of-way vacation and subdivision plat being pursued by separate application, but reviewed concurrently with this annexation process. The initial zoning ordinance will be presented to the city council concurrently with the annexation, and will follow the city's comp plan, will be zoned mixed-use regional, MUR, consistent with the adjacent existing zoning. The annexation follows state law, and this annexation will be considered over three council meetings. Step one in that process before you this evening, council considers the approval of the resolution, making a finding that petition is in substantial compliance with statutory requirements, and sets the public hearing date. The resolution will set that hearing date for April 11, 2022, and there are two council meetings in April concerning this annexation. We do have outside council here, but they do not have a separate presentation, so we're here to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? I see none, a motion is in order.
Mayor, motion to approve item 17A.
It's been moved by Councilmember Gardner, seconded by?
Marcano.
Seconded by Councilmember Gardner to approve item number 17A. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, question before us is the adoption of item number 17A. Call for the question.
The motion passes with nine yes votes and zero no votes.
Public invited to be heard.
Mayor, we do not have anybody on the line or in the chambers.
Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.